Okay, you are left at night.
Thank you, Jonathan. I'd like to call to order the Hood River City Council meeting for January 25, 2021. Yes. Glad to be out of 2020, I'll tell you. First of all, I'd like to do, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance, and I want to acknowledge the land that we live on and how the native culture took care of the land before we got it and before our ancestors received it, and we need to take care of it in the future for everyone else. All right, Jonathan, do you want to put the flag up so we can do the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. We have business from the audience first, and we have five people this evening that each will get three minutes apiece. I have my trusty timer here. Vicky Stifter is our first speaker, who's going to speak on affordable housing. Vicky, I think you're on.
Okay, I'm on.
Go ahead. We can hear you.
Okay, okay, good. This is an odd format, so.
Yeah.
Hi, everybody. It's good to be with you tonight. Thank you for your leadership, and for those who don't know me, I'm a resident of Hood River, property owner in Hood River, and also the pastor of Riverside Community Church, United Church of Christ in downtown Hood River. And I just wanted to, first of all, thank you for the decision that you made about the public safety building, and of putting that, as the paper described, on ice for now. I think that was a wise decision in light of the many priorities and needs that exist in the city right now, and I want to encourage you, in the meantime, to really take a look at whether or not that expiration of that fire station bond, some of those funds or all of those funds could be put to use for affordable housing, which has been identified time and time and time and time and time again, as you know, as a really critical need in our city. And so, before going forward with the public safety building, I think that what I would encourage you to do is to explore how those funds might be used to really meet our most critical need. And as a property owner, I just wanted to say that I would be really pleased to have my property taxes, part of my property taxes, going to support the building of affordable housing in my community. So, that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Vicky. Appreciate it. Our next speaker is Ruth Sue.
Mayor, I don't recognize any of the phone numbers or see her name in the audience presently.
Okay. Ruth, if you're on the call, could you raise your hand through the chat so Jonathan can find you if you're here? No? Okay, all right, we'll go to our next speaker, which will be Belinda Balla. And then after Belinda will be Heather Staton, and then Nancy Roach.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Belinda. Thanks.
Great. Thank you for having me here tonight and giving me a couple minutes to speak to you. So, I'm Belinda Balla, Hood River County Prevention Department Director, and I would like to bring before you for consideration implementing a tobacco retail licensure, otherwise known as TRL, in the city of Hood River in conjunction with Hood River County. An example of what an intergovernmental agreement between the county and the city might look like has been drafted, and I believe it's in your packets for you to peruse. In Hood River County, youth tobacco use is high, between 30.5% and 41% of 11th graders in Hood River County use e-cigarettes and other vaping products, and 7.2% of 8th graders use e-cigarettes and vaping products. A tobacco retail license is a document issued by a city or county that allows a business to legally sell cigarettes or other tobacco products in compliance with the city or county's law in which the business is located. Tobacco retail licensing is an evidence-based way to reduce tobacco use, decrease youth tobacco initiation, and regulate how tobacco products are marketed within communities. A TRL in Hood River would require businesses to purchase a license to sell tobacco and nicotine products, including vape products, provide for annual inspections and compliance checks of all retailers, provide a mechanism to educate retailers, and a penalty system for those who violate the law. An annual license fee sustains the program, and countywide, it would create a level playing field. Almost every state and many cities require a license to hunt, fish, have a pet, operate a tattoo parlor, or sell marijuana or liquor. However, many places still don't license to sell tobacco products. Among the retailer's assistants, Hood River, 1 in 3 advertised tobacco or e-cigarettes outside the store, 100% sold flavored tobacco products, 8% sold products within 12 inches of toys, candy, gum, soda, or ice cream, and 7 in 1 offered price promotions and discounts, and 73% advertised cigarettos for less than a dollar. In Hoover County, 2,500 adults smoked cigarettes regularly. In 2018, there were 1,230 residents with a serious illness caused by tobacco and 41 tobacco-related deaths.
Belinda, yes. You have about 20 seconds.
Okay. So, the Hood River County Prevention Department is pursuing implementation of TRL in the city of Hood River, Hood River County, and the city of Cascade Locks. The Hood River County Prevention Department has presented this information to the Board of Commissioners and will be to the City Council in Cascade Locks. We would just ask you to consider looking into this for the city of Hood River. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. That was a very informative PowerPoint presentation in our packet about that, too. Thank you. Heather Staton?
Let's see. Heather, if you're not familiar with the phone, I believe it is star six to unmute yourself.
Okay, I think I unmuted myself.
Okay, you're unmuted now, Heather. Go ahead.
Perfect. Thanks, Mayor McBride. I have a question. I submitted some written testimony or written comments earlier today, and if you guys got those, then I don't need to do any oral testimony.
I received those. Did others receive those? Okay. We did all receive that. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Nancy Roach.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, Nancy. Go ahead.
I just spent a minute talking to myself. My name's Nancy Roach. I live at 2 Eugene Street, and I spoke with y'all a couple weeks ago about the topic of missing middle housing. I'm not going to read verbatim exactly what I wrote. It just was pointed out to me that I missed a couple of things in my email to all of you. So, I've been pulling together feedback from local builders, Mike Kits, Joe Sager, my husband Greg Crafts, Doug Beveridge is also interested in being involved once he's back from international travel. Just want to note that Mike, Greg, and Doug built 400 of the entry-level houses that have been built in Hood River in the last 20 years. So, their feedback, I think, is going to be informative. Based on everything I've seen and heard, this, I'm really excited. We all have similar goals here. Dustin has been great about inviting comment, real-world testing and feedback on will these actually work? So, for example, Joe Sager, I don't know if y'all know him. He has lived here for ages. He and my son went to high school together and are still good friends, and he builds a lot of these kind of entry-level houses. And this kind of real-world feedback is critical because when I go through the city, I see that in 20 years, the city's going to look really different, and the decisions that y'all are making are going to show what the city will look like. So, my comments, based on what I've heard from the builders, are the heights, the combination of a 20-foot, 25-foot height with the pitched roof is hard. 25 feet is possible, but it makes the building more expensive, which kind of goes against what you're trying to achieve. So, I think looking at that carefully is important. The open space, again, taking wetlands and slopes out of the calculation of open space will decrease the density, which is going against what you're trying to do. The common open space, the romance and the reality there are very different. People want to claim their place, and there are homeowner association and legal issues that make this, if you do a lot of common open space, it makes it more expensive for the builder, and therefore more expensive for the buyer. And one thing I missed is the whole issue of parking. Everyone agrees, parking in back is wonderful. Sometimes it's not possible. So, go through Katy's Way and McKinley Court and try to picture those sites with parking forced in back, and the number of units, especially on Katy's Way, would have had to been cut, which would have increased the ultimate prices of the house. So, the questions that have come up, and that I'm hoping to hear more on tonight, is the new matrix has a maximum unit area ratio, and the question there is, is there a reason that floor area ratio wasn't used instead? Because a lot of cities, that's a very common measurement for things like that. They use it in Portland. In parking, the updated matrix shows two parking spaces being required in R1. And now, you know, the discussion that we heard at the Planning Commission was more decreased in parking. So, I'm just wondering if that was a mistake or what the rationale is between increasing the number of parking spaces.
Nancy, I need to have you try to wrap up.
Okay. The next, the final question is from all the people I've talked to. Is there an anticipated timeline for the next step, which I assume means going to the Planning Commission? And thank you, and I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you for your testimony. Appreciate it very much, and also appreciate you participating with the other builders that are trying to, you know, see if these will actually work for us. So, I really appreciate your time and effort on that and the builders that you're working with. Okay, great. Our first presentation.
Mayor, if I may interrupt, I apologize. Our second audience member has arrived.
Oh, okay.
Ruth Sue.
Okay, okay, great.
Hello, I'm Ruth Sue, and I'm sorry I wasn't here when you called on me.
No, that's okay. You have three minutes, Ruth.
So, thank you, Mayor Kate, and members of City Council for all the really important work you do. I was pleased to see that you put on hold the, well, not on hold, slowed down the process toward building a new police and community building. And there are a couple reasons I'm pleased to see that. I'm hoping there will be more community input to that. I know it's always hard to get that, even though people want it. The other thing is, I'm really concerned about affordable housing, as you all have been talking about. And I, for one, want to say that as a homeowner and taxpayer, I would be happy to have some of my tax dollars go toward funding a way of making that, at least finding out if we can't get a lot of community support for it. So, that's what I wanted to put out there. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your input, Ruth. Appreciate you taking the time. Okay. Now, we will go to presentations, and we have, Tim, did you have your hand up, though?
Just to point out that Ruth had showed up.
Oh, okay, all right. Thanks. Community Health Needs Assessment, Jenny Anglin, is going to be our first presenter this evening.
Hi there, I'm Jenny Anglin. Nice to meet all of you. And thank you for having me come today. So, I was asked to come and present on our Community Health Assessment from the Columbia Gorge Health Council. I'm hoping all of you can see my screen right now. Wonderful. And I think the intention of me coming today to talk about this is so that you can understand some of the data and some of the information that came out of our regional health assessment for your use in planning various projects and improvement plans for the city of Hood River. Just for your information, the very first page of this also has our website, which has detailed information on the health assessment, as well as my email address, should you have any follow-up questions after today. So, the health assessment was done back in 2019, and this really was a collaborative process with many organizations across our Columbia Gorge community, including healthcare providers, as well as various social service agencies. And the reason for doing this was to get a very accurate and comprehensive picture of the needs of the community, and it also allowed us to get more support and data from a lot of these organizations. This was a very wide-ranging assessment approach. The process overall, this is actually the third time we did the Community Health Assessment. It included seven counties, four hospitals, two states, many data sources, including a consumer survey. And then we also had some additional partners that we had not worked before that agreed and wanted to collaborate with us, including Southwest Accountable Community of Health, Advantage Dental, Eastern Oregon CCO. And we also did a plain language review of the content of the survey that went out before we surveyed many of the residents, a very comprehensive survey as well. So, our Community Health Assessment built off of our 2017 original Community Health Improvement Plan, which focused on a sense of community, built environment, and access. And so, our health assessment is also organized in those categories, which I'll go through in the next slides. Sense of community is around things like people with social and family supports, a sense of security and belonging. Themes include things like, do people feel like they have social supports, feel safe in their neighborhoods, feel that they're getting the support they need from their family? Do they belong, and are they being treated fairly? And what traumatic events might exist? Are there groups of people who are experiencing disparities? And then the definition of caregiver, adults providing caregiver services for another adult. So, within that, the results of our survey on sense of community, overall, people feel social support challenges are worse than 2016. So, in 2019, that went down. 16% of adults of caregivers to an older adult, and half of caregivers have adequate support. Respite care is identified as highest need. And then rates of respondents who experienced violence increased, and 42% witnessed or experienced violence. The built environment part of the survey is looking at things like places where we live, learn, work, play, includes basic needs like housing, which we've heard a lot of today, housing that's affordable, appropriate, healthy. It also has food needs, mobility, transportation, includes making sure that people have a place to be physically active, and youth can feel safe. And to make the best of our built environments, we all need to feel safe in our neighborhoods, parks, and schools. Themes that came up, housing, food and transportation, school-based meals, bullying, childcare access. So, the results of this part of the survey, 25% of those surveyed worried about losing their housing, and 7% went without housing, the same as 2016. And then the number who feel housing burdened, which this survey identified as paying more than half of your income on housing, is worse than 2016. So, if you look at the metric for the 50%, that's actually an even higher, I'm sorry, even more stringent than what you would usually see measuring that as 30% of your income or more as being housing insecure. Housing affordability continues to get worse, and the supply of affordable housing is a severe constraint for the region. Increases in housing costs is squeezing out other basic needs and impacting more households. Common discussion has been whether the 200% federal poverty level income requirement to qualify for food, utility, physical activity, or other supports is too low. And then 2019 results for the built environment, access to healthy foods. 27% of all households worry about running out of food. In our region, the people who experience higher levels of food insecurity include low-income households, adults on Medicaid, adults on Medicare, and communities of color. 10% went without food or meals sometime in the past 12 months. 23% of migrant seasonal farmworker households went without food or meals. 27% worried about running out of food before having money to buy more, and half of adults on Medicaid worry about running out of food. 6% are affected by distance or lack of transportation to get their food. And people tend to eat more veggies than fruit. And then the results on built environment for transportation, it is actually the highest unmet basic need, and it has increased since 2016. People who experience barriers with accessing basic needs and services due to transportation include families with young children, low-income households, adults on Medicaid, communities of color. 29% of caregivers went without social activities. Adult healthcare access is the area of health affects how well adults can learn and earn income. People with chronic conditions or other illnesses that are managed can thrive and be healthy. Healthcare access means adults got the healthcare service they needed. The health of adults also had direct impact on the health of their children and the children they care for. Some themes in this are chronic conditions, including obesity or overweight, disability, healthcare access and services. The outcome of this portion of the survey, obesity or overweight was the top chronic condition, 30% of people. 7.5% experienced a lot of difficulty with walking. Half of smokers would like help quitting. And from the Consumer Survey for Adults Seeking Needed Services, 8.6% did not get needed medical care. 25% did not get dental services, and 23% did not get needed mental health services. 46.7% of the uninsured went without medical care. For the results on stable health insurance, Medicare, medical insurance was the highest. 86% had insurance. Little over 5% had insurance for the last 12 months. 8% had no insurance for the last 12 months. For dental care, 64% had dental insurance for the past 12 months. 8.5 had dental insurance for some of the past 12, and 27% had no dental. For vision care, 61% had vision insurance. 7.5 had vision insurance for some of the past 12 months, and 31 had no vision insurance for the past 12 months. And then long-term care insurance, 35% had it for the past 12 months, 2.7 for the last some of the past 12 months, and 61.5 had no long-term care insurance for the past 12 months. And so, this piece here goes through the steps that the Health Council underwent in the past year to gather and compile all of the Community Health Assessment data to come up with their CHIP priority groups. So, this Community Health Assessment data went to our various groups, such as the Clinical Advisory Panel, which is a gathering of clinical-minded folks who work with the Health Council, as well as our Community Advisory Council, which is made up of consumer members and other community members who make decisions based on some of our, to give input to the Health Council on some of our priorities. So, these assessments went to this group for them to figure out what are the priority areas, what are the things that should make up what is going to turn into our Community Health Improvement Plan, and for them to agree on what some of the goals and metrics that would go into that Community Health Improvement Plan. So, for what we're working on at this time, the 2020 Columbia Gorge Regional CHIP Priorities, or Community Health Improvement Plan Priorities, the identified priorities based on that Community Health Assessment are housing, food, transportation and mobility, improved access to equitable healthcare services, improved access to equitable physical activity in the outdoors, improved social connection and communication, and children and youth. And so, right now, what we are working on most is coming up with SMART goals that fit into each of these topics that help improve and address needs that came up on our Community Health Assessment. And this process right now is underway with probably about half to three-quarters of the way finished. But we thought it would be helpful for all of you to have an understanding of what we're working on and what this is going to look like as you're thinking on various projects that your group may be working on at the city level. And then lastly, we just, we anticipate having our final CHIP with all of those goals and metrics completed sometime towards the end of March, but in the month of June at the very latest. And that will be available on our website, or you can also get more information by contacting any of us at the Health Council. Does anyone have any questions that I can answer or more information I can provide?
If you could put the screen share down, and then I can see if anyone's raising their hand.
Sure, I can stop it.
Okay, great. Does anyone have any questions? Mark?
Thanks a lot for the presentation, Jenny. That was useful. Is there an ask for us as policymakers in the city? I mean, obviously, you know, where do we fit in the partner tree for that?
Sure. From our perspective, if there is any way that you all are working on goals you wanted to share with us and partner to input those into and have it become a part of our CHIP, that would certainly be welcome. But I think more importantly, we just want to make sure that you all, as counselors, are aware of where the main needs in the community were, so that you can use that in your planning and decision-making around goals that you might be either already working on or goals that you're thinking about starting on your end, or if you come into any pots of money or funds and want to invest that in anything in particular, you have an understanding of where this huge regional health assessment really showed the need to be greatest. And I think one of the things you probably saw in there, too, as you hear many people talking about here, housing, food, transportation are really some of the big areas across our community. And not only is that what we're hearing, but it's also very much supported in the data as well.
Thank you. Gladys, did you have a?
Yeah, I mean, very similar to what Mark had to say. First of all, thank you for this presentation. Thank you for taking the time to come and talk to us. How can we, as a council, be a better partner to the entire process? How do we not only partner as a city, but then we continue to bridge that to the county, so that we are kind of working on this collaboratively as decision and policymakers to help support you guys in some of the work that you're doing? So that we are kind of working on this collaboratively as decision and policymakers to help support you guys in some of the work that's being done.
Sure, I think one of the, one of the things that I would suggest, which is already underway is, I think Rachel Fuller, who's I can see is on here, she has been very communicative with us and has been reaching out periodically to see where we're at in our process. And if there's anything that that she can help with or also be, you know, asking about things that you might be doing that might fall into some of these areas. And so I think that's really the biggest way is making sure that we're all communicating regularly. So that when we're working on something that's like the big CHIP or community health assessment, you all are made aware and vice versa. If there's things that you're working on that in particular are just really big and going to address one of those major needs. If, you know, Rachel and I can be in contact about those things, that's really helpful too. So that we can say, well, it may not be specifically in our CHIP document that we'll, we'll come up with, at least knowing that there's big projects underway for housing or food or different things like that helps us know that that some of those things are being addressed, at least in the Hood River City.
Megan and then Tim?
Yeah, thanks for coming. I guess I'm wondering like the SMART goals, you know, safer housing or transportation, what, and that's like, what would that look like from your perspective?
Yeah, I think some of the ones that are coming through and in the works are things around, like the Gorge grown organization has worked really hard with the Food Coalition to come up with some very specific goals and work that they're going to do to improve things like the food supply, improve access to food in various areas of the community. And so we will see things really targeted in those areas. I don't have, those goals haven't been fully kind of defined yet. So I don't know exactly what it's going to look like, but I know that they're doing some really great work around both impacting like the supply as well as they have some of their mobile markets and things and VeggieRx programs that they've done in the past to help get food out to, to people who most need it and make sure that it's sustainable and local and all those great things. So I think that's a really good example. And then for transportation, I know that there's a whole transportation coalition that's working on things like expanding, you know, bus routes and they're also working to give passes out to folks who might need them and find ways to make riding the bus more accessible to people who need it. So those are some kind of some ideas of things that are, that are going into that.
Great, Tim?
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks Jenny for the presentation. I am wondering, is there any effort by your organization to actually like identify grant opportunities or anything like that?
Yeah, we actually, you know, our Clinical Advisory Panel and our, our CAC Group, Community Advisory Council, both, both organizations are involved in issuing grants to community members. So our organization, the Health Council, does get funding and things from partnering with Pacific Source to run the CCO. And so when those funds come to us, we work with those two groups to issue funds out into the community. So that's one way. We also have some pretty strong partnerships with, for example, the United Way that we've worked with closely, who has given out, you know, large grants in the community for even most recently around COVID and making sure that businesses and, and local groups are able to stay afloat during these times. So we will partner both with other organizations to either give funds or also partner with them to, to give out money to some of these groups that might be applying to try to have a CHIP topic that, or a goal that fits into the CHIP topics.
Yeah, that's great. I think it's really important to, for one, do the thing that you're doing, identify the need, but also have that bridge to fund and, and actually turn these needs into actions. So I appreciate that.
Sure.
Anyone with, anyone else with questions? Eric, and then I think, did Gladys, did you raise your hand again? Okay, Eric and then Gladys.
Hi, thank you, Jenny, and thank you for your presentation. Not to put you on the spot, but I just wondered, one of the things that the council has been talking about fair amount is what can we do better on the front of mental health in our community? And I just wondered from your vantage point, is there anything that comes to mind that you think the city could be, could be doing differently or that which we could work with the county better or more to make an achievable point of progress on just that one issue in particular?
I think that's a really tough question. Mental and behavioral health has been something that's come up pretty regularly in some of our meetings. I know, you know, we've undergone, for example, at our Clinical Advisory Panel, some pretty big changes. And we now have, we have some co-chair or some chair representation there who's very passionate about the topic of improved access to behavioral health. We've also got a lot of board representation in the area of behavioral health. And so as well as some contractual obligation to Oregon Health Authority for improving access to behavioral health services. And so it's something that we have really been talking about and delving into is a very complex problem. And so I don't know that there's necessarily an easy answer of, or an answer to say, you know, how can we partner better at the city level as much as how do we make the community an attractive place and an affordable place maybe for behavioral health therapists to come and practice? Because that's one of the things I really hear from a lot of the behavioral health providers that I have talked with is that, you know, as anything else, they have to be able to afford to provide their services and afford to live there. And we have to have good contracts in place with them, with the various insurance companies and things like that. So it's kind of a huge mix of, is this a place they all want to come work? Is it easy to recruit and attract them? Do we have, you know, culturally appropriate foods here that may mean that the type, the providers that are coming from the more Latino communities or others that serve our populations? You know, is this a place that they'd want to come live and practice too? So I don't know necessarily what, what, what the right answer to that is as much as.
I think, I think our next speaker, Al Barton, from the Center for Living, who's going to do a presentation right after you, maybe we'll have some more answers to that question. We'll see. That'd be a good question for him too.
For sure. He's also the Chair of the Columbia Gorge Health Council, so, which is my organization.
Great, Gladys?
Yeah, the last comment that I wanted to make was, you know, I know that Counselor Met and I definitely join these meetings here and there through work. I, I would like to request that as counselors and as a council, that we are invited to both the Clinical Advisory Panel and the CAC, simply to hear the conversations that are happening. I think it's a lot of information. You learn a lot. Some of it is definitely very complex, not easy to understand, such as, you know, building codes and all that. But it's important that we simply have that invitation and then we can decide to join or not and then continue to work with all organizations, including Rachel, just to share similar visions for the community.
Thanks, Gladys. Yeah, the Columbia Gorge Health Equity Council, I believe, meets tomorrow. Is that correct, Jenny? And Rachel's been going to those meetings and I'm going to be attending the one tomorrow. And we are going to talk about collaboration tomorrow at that meeting. So we're, we're starting down the path on some of these things a little more intensely than we have in the past, although Rachel has been attending a lot of those meetings over the last, at least the last year, I believe. So, great, thank you, Jenny. Extremely informative. I think that you guys all asked really good questions about how we, we could collaborate, how we could help, how, you know, what's our role? And I think keeping in mind, you know, food, transportation and housing are kind of the three things on the top of our, our list, especially housing and transportation, that we have something to do with, that the city has something to do with in a concrete way. So I think that when we talk about those things in the transportation system plan and the parking plan and the working with CAT, the building codes, that we need to keep this study in mind and who we're trying to help when we talk about all those subjects. So I think keeping this top of mind during our conversations, it would be helpful for help, for helping you guys and to collaborate with you. So, thanks Jenny, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right.
Bye.
Bye. Our next presentation is going to be Al Barton from Mid Columbia Center for Living. So tonight, or yeah, this evening is going to, is a great way for us to get a kind of a snapshot of what our community looks like and is, might be struggling with in some instances and maybe some ideas for us.
Okay, can you all see me? Can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
And it looks like I can present because you don't necessarily want to see me, so there's a little echo. Again, thanks, Mayor and council members for your interest and time tonight to present, to talk briefly about behavioral health, mostly at the behest, again, kudos and much appreciation to City Manager Fuller for elevating these concerns to you all and giving us the opportunity. And I think this will be a good bookend and also maybe a little bit more focused discussion on what Counselor Haney was talking about in terms of specific behavioral health needs. So this is where Jenny just presented kind of on a 30,000-foot view. I'll probably be able to dig in a little bit deeper and talk about, but also want to honor your time and I have about seven or eight slides. And then, of course, if you have questions, I'm happy to take those. This is much more interesting as a dialogue versus me sharing slides with you all. So let me see if I can pull up my presentation here. Are you all seeing the PowerPoint now? Hopefully.
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, I'm trying to get it to full screen here, Erica. Well, come on. Okay, now it should be full screen. So again, yeah, I'm Al Barton. I'm a licensed professional counselor. So I, I'm more of an administrator. I'm the Deputy Director for Mid Columbia Center for Living. So I do more administrative types of things these days. But I still do, obviously, my heart and training is as a behavioral health professional. So that's how I tend to see the world and, and the services that I provide. And as Jenny mentioned, I also am the Chair of the Columbia Gorge Health Council, which I think, again, kudos to that group for elevating behavioral health. You know, there tends to be a lot of focus on physical health, but behavioral health, we know is a vital and important thing. So what I presented for you tonight, and hopefully this will meet some of your needs and spur some brief discussion. I'd love to hear your questions and comments. This is kind of a year-end report. We've done this for Sherman County, but I adapted the data tonight for you to talk about Hood River County. So I know in some ways this data, just an apology, you know, will, will cover Hood River County as a whole. But obviously Hood River, you know, as the city has a big lion's share of this information. So just a brief overview on what Center for Living, again, some of you may be extremely familiar with us and some of you may not at all. So I'll just kind of try to do the one-room schoolhouse and adapt as much as I can. So every county in Oregon must have a community mental health program designated. So the three counties here in the mid Columbia, so Hood River County, Wasco County, and Sherman to our east, all came together to form an intergovernmental agreement to do their community health, mental health needs collaboratively. And they have formed an intergovernmental agreement and a contract with the agency I work at, Center for Living. So we are the CMHP or Community Mental Health Program for these counties. So every county will have their own. All these requirements are going to be the same. By statute, community mental health programs have to do certain things. So in other words, if you're going to be the community mental health program, you can't just à la carte order from the menu and say, oh, we'll do this, but we don't want to do that. So some of those things that Center for Living and all the community mental health programs have to do is provide mobile crisis. And that's been a real transition. When I first started, I'd been at Center for Living for 13 years. I've been in behavioral health about 25, 26 years. But the idea to go mobily and respond to crisis in the community and try to divert and prevent behavioral health crises from becoming an arrest or from becoming a trip to the emergency room. Many times we can divert those and respond to a business, respond to the street. We can get someone to our offices. The state has really prioritized and tried to move away from hospitals and, and places like that to, to homes, communities, obviously COVID has challenged that, but we have to do mobile crisis. So we do that 24/7. So at 2:00 in the morning, there's a behavioral health crisis worker who will respond theoretically to any of the counties and try to come up with the best outcome. Community mental health program also is involved with the civil commitment process, which is sort of, you know, the, the most extreme level. If someone is possibly dangerous to self or dangerous to others, maybe they can't take care of their basic needs because of a serious mental health problem. Civil commitment is a remedy, you know, all states and the Union have a civil commitment remedy. But it's, you know, it's where a court is involved and can theoretically compel someone to participate in treatment. It's, it's a very heavy-handed and very, you know, implies civil liberties and we take it very seriously. And it's obviously a very much a last resort and doesn't typically happen where someone is actually committed by a court. But we do have to do that from start to finish, from the investigative process to actually being in court. What Center for Living really is, and most community mental health programs, what they're really designed to do after crisis services is provide that community-based service for priority populations of people who are going to be defined as folks with severe mental illness and children and families, especially children that are at risk for placement out of their home. So that's really where the community mental health program fills in the niche from, you know, many of my colleagues have their own practice, you know, they might have a nice office downtown. They might, you know, talk to, you know, fairly, fairly, you know, folks having a difficult time. Whereas the community mental health programs really focus on the more vulnerable populations that I just spoke about. So, and those services are again, community-based. So rather than, you know, waiting in an office, we actually go out to the community, out to homes. We provide skills training. We try to keep people focused on their basic needs so that they stay in the community. Because that's really our focus is a community-based service. But Center for Living does provide a lot of mental health and substance abuse treatment. So what we would call kind of standard, you know, what most of us would think of as, you know, coming into an office and talking about thoughts and feelings and working on skills. And maybe if I have a drinking or drug problem, focusing on, on ways to cope and adapt to avoiding that. So we do do a lot of what we call outpatient mental health services. So Center for Living has psychiatry services. So, you know, these are specialized medical providers, nurse practitioners and doctors that provide very high-level care, typically provide, you know, psychotropic medications. But again, you know, that's just, the best psychiatrist, of course, will tell you that that's, you know, it's not just as simple as taking a pill, even though medications can be a critical part of recovery and stability. That's just one element to the puzzle. People need those emotional supports, just like you and I do. Center for Living also operates the Enhanced Care Program at the Hood River Care Center, which is a residential setting for typically older adults who need skilled nursing and locked psychiatric care. So many of you may not know that in our backyard, we do have the Enhanced Care Center. It serves about 12 residents, some, some from all over the state, very specialized, very intensive level of care. And then up until a couple of months ago, Center for Living used to be the, the, the Community Developmental Disabilities Program, but that work did transfer to community living case management. So we actually aren't involved in the developmental disabilities oversight anymore. So that did transition and that was, you know, frankly, another whole story, but kind of challenging. But ultimately, I think it's a good home for that group. So anyway, I'm just going to run briefly, you know, the types of things that Center for Living does. Again, we have mental health professionals, you know, masters level, social workers, counselors. We have a lot of paraprofessionals, mental health associates that provide a lot of the basic supports. They work with a lot of our serious mentally ill clients and a lot of our children that need intensive services. We have, again, as I mentioned psychiatry, we have medical providers. We have certified alcohol and drug counselors. These are specially trained professionals to help people recover from drugs and alcohol. A lot of our services, again, we do a lot of peer-delivered services, which are people in recovery themselves who go out into the world, work closely with probation, work closely with the Department of Human Services to, to keep people in the least restrictive environment. And then again, I mentioned our crisis services. So again, people, I sometimes do that rotation back next weekend. I'll be on that rotation here in our community. So some of our key partners at Center for Living are obviously primary care. You know, that tends to be where we get most of our referrals. Primary care clinics collaborate a lot of care, you know, a lot of behavioral health care is still provided in primary care. collaborate a lot of care, you know, a lot of behavioral health care is still provided in primary care clinics. Center for Living isn't the be all and all. So we work very closely with like community health, Columbia Gorge Family Medicine, of course, MCMC, all those primary care clinics in the DOWs. Providence is a key partner, a lot, as you'll see later, when I start to present on some data and statistics. A lot of our crisis services tend to end up in the hospital. Hospitals also provide a lot of medical clearance and support for a lot of our folks who maybe need a higher level of care. But we work very closely with the hospital. They're one of our key partners. Law enforcement, and this is again, you know, something I just really want to stress. We have a really solid relationship with our law enforcement partners, which for you all would include the city police, but also we work very closely with the sheriff, the state police, as well as the probation, you know, folks, a lot of our folks may be involved with the probation department, but you know, law enforcement tends to be one of our closest partners we work with because of, we typically have a common response. You know, that mobile crisis service, they have what's called Everbridge, where they can actually directly access our crisis services. And you know, if there's not a public safety situation, in other words, we don't expect mental health professionals to go to bridges or to go to, you know, situations where a person might have a weapon or there might be a domestic violence issue. But we will respond in tandem with city and county and even state police to homes. You know, we will respond to the community. We responded to community partners, to businesses. And the goal of that is to again, get police, you know, called, if there's not a public safety issue, is to really, you know, relieve the police from doing that type of response and, and not make it, you know, about arrests or intimidation. It's, it's really about how to partner and collaborate, make sure the situation's safe, but then really let the behavioral health professionals try to come up with a positive outcome. Now that's not to say that, you know, there isn't a place, time and a place, obviously for public safety, but it really is, and I apologize, I don't have some really hardcore data, but it's, it's kind of a rarity where we really have to, you know, lean on law enforcement to most of the time, behavioral health can, can respond to those situations and come up with a, an appropriate response. So Department of Human Services, you know, we work with both on the child side, the child welfare, and then the aging and people with disability side for, we have a lot of case collaboration, obviously a lot of community safety and some referrals from those departments. They would refer people to us. The school districts, you know, again, they, Hood River County, they really are pretty progressive in terms of how they deal with behavioral health. You know, they have the student based health center at the high school. They have their own behavioral classroom for children that have behavior problems, but but we still obviously work with the school districts quite closely. COVID, of course, has, you know, changed that. And then Norcore, you know, we try to work really closely with the jail to divert crises. We really have some specialized programs that try to divert people with behavioral health problems unfortunately tend to be overrepresented typically for minor crimes. You know, the data will tell you they're not committing, you know, major felonies, but minor crimes. We try to work with Norcore either to divert people, to shorten their stay there, or to get them access to acute psychiatric care, if that's what they need. So talking pretty fast, I just want to honor your time. This really gives you kind of an overview. This next slide with some graphs, the top services that Center for Living provides, if we look at in Hood River County, you know, if there were 11,121, that's our N, contacts in 2020. So that's how many services. Now that could be, you know, that's not 11,000 individuals. That could be, you know, one, one person might be 100 of those contacts. Just for an example, but most of what we do on the left there, that blue bar, you know, just more than 4,000 of those are, are standard outpatient mental health services. And then the next, about half of that is for folks with severe and persistent mental illness. So there's that, it says MH, mental health, SPMI, severe and persistent mental illness, which is a designation for folks that have a maybe more advanced or chronic condition in Hood River. You know, the next graph, just moving on, are our standard outpatient youth services. So these again, wouldn't be folks maybe at risk of placement, but these would be children and families that need outpatient counseling. The next one would be that ICTS, I apologize, we're, we're pate with acronyms. It may ask more questions than, than answers, but intensive children's treatment services, which are, those are the kids that are at risk for placement in foster homes. Maybe to a sub acute or an acute psychiatric placement. We really try to wrap around and provide intensive services to those kids and families and school districts to keep those kids in their homes versus, you know, when I started in this business, those children would just go to a locked psychiatric center. The state has done a really good job of trying to keep kids in the community. The next services are going to be some more specialized things. We, we offer some specific targeted services to people with severe and persistent mental illness, assertive community treatment. We offer a supported employment program. There's a RAP program for kids and families. There's our jail diversion program. You can see that's moving along there. That's kind of just what it says. It's trying to work with people with severe mental health problems to keep them out of jail. And then this next slide is much, kind of the minority, but just kind of shows you the breadth of services that community mental health programs. And again, these services would be offered in any county, right? So this isn't just a Center for Living thing, but you know, there's that supportive employment, which is a kind of a, just what it says. It's getting people with mental health problems in the workforce. There's that, we do offer some services, obviously pre-COVID to some of the school districts like Odell, Cascade Locks. You can see there's some more services there, some specialized services. PCIT is a very, again, I apologize for being, trying to be condensing, but I want to honor your time. You know, that's a very specialized service for, for children two to seven years of age that involves coaching the parent on how to, how to parent the child in the moment. And then our next service there is that pre-commitment. Those are the, that civil commitment. Those are the folks that might be headed to court because of their dangerousness to self for others. We do have a supported housing. We try to keep people either getting access with mental health problems to housing and also staying in their house. And then the last two there are our early psychosis program. We offer a specialized service for young adults. So again, I apologize. I'm just kind of scatter shottin', but giving you just a breadth of what CMHPs and community mental health does. The next slide, we're just drilling down. I, I think in talking with City Manager Fuller about crisis services, this tends to be kind of the most provocative part of community mental health program. This next slide really talks about where does Center for Living provide crisis services? Where do the calls come from? So if the N is 300, right, there were about 300 crisis assessments in our, all of our counties. You can see about 63% of those, I put them in red, Riverhawks there and the blue is the Eagles there. About 37% happened in Hood River County, 63%. Now there would be a tiny little sliver from Sherman County, but most of the services, you can see about, you know, two thirds of the services of our crisis services are needed in Wasco County and the DOWs. And that, you know, might be a whole nother discussion about why that is or isn't, but that's just what the data is going to tell us for 2020. And then again, just moving on, so I can get to some of your questions. You know, what do, drilling into some of our crisis services, you know, if the N is 300, if we typically do about a crisis a day, maybe a little bit less on average than a day. You know, less than 20% of those are going to be children. So most of the crisis services are for adults in our counties. About almost 80% of those crisis contacts are going to be seen in an emergency room. So the bulk of this services happen either Providence or Mid Columbia Medical Center. So you know, someone, their family member is concerned about them. They bring them to the hospital. You know, law enforcement sees someone and encourages them to come to the hospital. You know, we see them at our office and we feel like they need something that we can't provide in our communities. So we help them to the emergency room. And then the last bullet there you'll see is that is only about a third of the crisis responses require a higher level of care. Meaning most of the time when someone's in a behavioral health crisis, they're going to stay in the community. So not everybody needs to go to a psychiatric hospital. And I would argue that even probably half of those higher level of care responses are going to be, they're not even going to need a psychiatric hospital. They're going to need, we have a respite in the DOWs, which is a non-locked, unlocked facility where people can see their family and participate in care. So it's really kind of a myth to think that, you know, everybody who's in crisis needs to go to a hospital. We really try to prioritize and keep people in their community with their natural support. So again, I think Commissioner Haney, you asked some questions about what some of the challenges are. And so this is where I'll kind of end my discussion. So some of the challenges, again, looking at data and anecdotally from our staff. And again, this is going to coincide, I think, with a lot of the feedback and discussion I'm sure that the council addresses is that, you know, there's a lack of suitable housing for people with behavioral health problems. So even a larger subset of folks who struggle with housing because of income. A lot of the folks that we work with might be chronically homeless. You know, they might have a substandard rental history. They might have behavioral health symptoms that make them a less than desirable tenant. So if I can rent to someone who, you know, you know, has a, a, a blue collar job or somebody that, you know, Center for Living is trying to help even with some rental subsidies and some supports, it can be a real challenge for folks in Hood River to, who have serious mental illness to find housing and to maintain that housing. Another big challenge, and this is a big thing, I think, for the community, you know, we're, we're working closely with the DOWs and Wasco County on this, you know, a lot of, I think a lot of citizens think that everybody who's homeless is mentally ill, and that's not true. Again, you know, most of the, I think the city's experience of the folks who are homeless, that's really just the tip of the iceberg. A lot of the folks, you know, who we tend to experience as, as being housing challenged, you know, tend to couch surf. Maybe they have friends or family that they can stay with for a period of time. You know, the folks that most of us see on the street or that tend to maybe, you know, get the, the law enforcement involved, that tends to be the tip of the iceberg. You know, some of those folks obviously do need behavioral health supports, but that's not all of them. So there sometimes can be a confusing about, well, they just need, you know, mental health treatment and a pill and they, they won't be homeless anymore. It's clearly not that simplistic. And then the last sort of feedback about how we might collaborate with the city is we get this a lot and, and you may experience this in your personal life. You know, if, if you've ever loved or cared for someone who maybe has a drinking or drug problem or a mental health problem, you know, they often struggle with the, the, I'm not sick and I don't need help problem. Meaning that person may struggle, they don't see the insight and run, and recognizing how their, their illness or their difficulty causes problems for others. But clearly the family members are like, somebody do something. Oh my gosh, this person's, you know, talking funny, or they're living, living under a bridge, or they're not, you know, eating right. So you know, the, the bar in, in, in Oregon is, and in the United States in general, is quite high to compel someone or force them to seek mental health treatment. And so it can be very difficult for families who care for someone, you know, they, they want Center for Living to come and, you know, scoop them up and get them well. And it can be a very protracted exercise to try to work with the family and the individual to try to get, get help. So I think that might be a way we could, back to your question, Commissioner Haney, Counselor Haney about helping, you know, how, how do we care for people that, that love somebody who's mentally ill? How can we provide some, some training and some, some oversight or a, a summit where we talk about stigma and we talk about helping educate what you can do for someone if you're in that situation? Because it's not just as simple as, you know, Center for Living taking them away and getting them well. It's, it's a much more difficult process. So in the last, at least I want to honor your time. This is Dr. Gower, I apologize. She did have another commitment. She's our executive director. She may have joined the call late. I know she, she was running up to the last minute. There's her extension, her email. There's mine right below, our website. You know, we really value any feedback you or constituents have about our organization, the services that we provide. We really want strive for trying to do, improve and do better. So if you have concerns, I, I can, I'm happy to speak with you directly. I'm spec, happy to speak to your constituents who have concerns. So again, I apologize as, as I work with Ms. Fuller, I tend to talk really fast and be scatter shot. But if that, that's my presentation, I will stop. And if there are questions, comments, again, feedback for Center for Living, happy to dig in on data. Obviously confidentiality, we can't talk about specific cases, but if there's something I can help you all with, then I'd be happy to do, do so.
Thank you so much for that presentation. That was very informative.
Okay, hopefully not too, too quick.
Lot of acronyms, but
Yes.
I think, I think we, on some of those charts, but we think we got the gist of the, of it there with all those acronyms. I just had one question and then I'm sure others won't have questions too. I noticed that the mental health, the people that have mental health issues, there, I think you said 80% maybe of all the adults end up in the emergency room or come through the emergency room. And of those, are they usually involved with law enforcement or maybe only 50% of those are involved with law enforcement? Do, do you have any statistics for that?
Well, Mayor, I apologize. I knew you, you might ask that question. I, I tried to dig into some of our data. And I was, I was having, I'll be frank, I was having some troubles. We have a a, a thing that can go into our electronic health record and pull out those, because you know, we had 21 contacts with law enforcement and I apologize, I don't have that at my fingertips. You know, anecdotally, we, we, in Oregon, you know, the, the law enforcement has the opportunity to place someone in their custody and bring them, you know, against their will to the hospital. That happens very rarely. You know, I, I just have a lot of respect for our law enforcement partners. I've never frankly, you know, never seen in, in any of our counties, any, any what I termed heavy handed response. I know it sounds maybe amazing, but that's, that's the case. I've seen body cam footage of, you know, of, of many law enforcement officers and it's been, it's been pretty, pretty, I, I was impressed with their patience and their compassion for their citizens. But yes, so, so that's just for crisis services. So that, that, that 300, when I talked about 300 crisis services, 80% of those crises are going to be seen at an emergency room. They could be, they could be brought by law enforcement on a, what's called a police officer hold. So there are statutes where law enforcement can do that. But I've experienced many, many times, law enforcement will just encourage the person. Obviously they're not going to take them into custody or compel them, but they're going to say, wow, you're having a really difficult time. Would you like to talk to a mental health professional? But a lot of times what happens, and especially if it's a young person, you know, it's a family member or loved one, friend, bringing them to the hospital. They're not sure what to do. You know, their friends talking about killing themselves. They're concerned about it. They're not sure what to do. They come to the emergency room. And the emergency room providers, you know, medically screened them to make sure there's not a medical condition. And then they call our crisis team to come and evaluate them and come up with a safety plan and, and an outcome. So, did that answer your question?
Well, not the statistical part of it.
Yeah.
But that was what I was, what I was trying to, what I was wondering about, I guess. And is it because of the police facility that we have, it, you know, it's, it's far substandard for them bringing, having to bring or being able to bring someone with a mental health issue into the station versus bringing them into the hospital. I believe they have to bring them into the hospital if they're in a crisis situation. Are there other places that actually have some kind of a facility to bring them that isn't the hospital?
The two things, yes. And, and actually this is a statistic I didn't present. Actually, it's interesting. There are more office based crisis evaluations in Hood River than there are in, even though Wasco has more crises, period. More evaluations in an office. So we have had law enforcement, you know, they, they can bring people to our, they can ask, would you like to come to Center for Living? I've seen the sheriff and the city escort the person. And again, essentially drop them off, you know, and kind of provide a, a warm handoff to a behavioral health professional who will evaluate the person. So we can see him in office. There is an effort in, largely spearheaded by the Wasco County Sheriff to build a crisis diversion center. Because again, if you're a law enforcement officer and you encounter someone who maybe is expressing dangerousness to self for others, which again, I just want you to know, it's relatively rare, but it does happen. You know, some counties like the Chutes County will have a crisis diversion center where law enforcement can take them to a safe and neutral place that isn't a hospital and isn't a jail and isn't, you know, a behavioral health office. And so there's an effort to try to put that together. Again, it's, it's always for our counties, it's always a different, you know, do we need 10 of those beds? Do we need two of those beds? So they're really working on the scope of that. And that's, that's a hard question to answer, but that's a goal eventually is to have a regional crisis diversion center where, again, you would see, you know, a mental health professional like me versus, you know, someone with, you know, a badge or a weapon or, you know, a, a, going to jail or an emergency room where, you know, there might be a lot of, a lot of sick, sick folks there. So.
Okay. The only other question I have is, do you have problems getting and keeping people to work for you to help people with mental health crisis? And because of that, is it hard to keep, you know, people there 24/7 when we might need to call for somebody?
So was your question, Mayor, about like, like Center for Living retaining staff and like having adequate staffing levels?
Yes.
That's very perceptive. Yes, it, it, it tends to be one of the challenges, especially the masters level counselors. They tend to, if you want to find a job as a masters level mental health professional or a drug and alcohol counselor, there's a lot of work for you, right? There's a lot of work in Portland. There's a lot of work in eastern Oregon. It tends to be pretty hard for us to keep those professionals. You know, we, we do offer, we have a loan repayment program. So it actually can be pretty enticing if people have student loans, but it's really, really hard work. You know, there's a lot of document, just being blunt, there's a lot of documentation requirements. Obviously, you know, we have to have capacity to stay afloat and to pay our bills and to keep our lights on. We have to have people busy. And then, you know, sometimes the work can be very challenging. It can be, you know, it can be rather than people who maybe come to a session or two and start to experience change, you know, some of the more challenging clients we work with might have more chronic conditions, more entrenched challenges. So it, it can be very difficult for behavioral health professionals. You know, they, they tend to, if you look at the, most of the private providers, they maybe got their start at Center for Living. You know, a lot of the folks in the school, the same thing. So they tend to, you know, get their training and then, and I'm not begrudging them. I understand that, but it tends to be difficult for us to retain those, those, especially those folks with a masters degree, kind of the specialized people that do the crisis services that do the one-to-one counseling. So yes, it does. And then like, you know, like Jenny was talking about, a lot of our folks, you know, have to live in Lisle or they live in, you know, we have people that live even, you know, farther up into Carson and just because of housing, you know, that we, we, mental behavioral health professionals, you know, aren't, aren't, aren't paid nearly like we, mental, behavioral professionals, you know, aren't, aren't paid nearly like a, you know, primary care professional. And so obviously finding, you know, if you're a middle-class professional, finding a place to live can be challenging around here, even in the Dalles. So a lot of other people we've hired recently, the last two we hired, don't, they live in Washington, right? They live kind of far away. So.
Thank you. Others? Questions? Gladys?
Thank you, Al, for being here. I appreciate your time.
Sure.
Of the 79.6% that go to the ER, what are the demographics of those individuals?
Boy, that's an excellent question. You know, I probably, I would do it, I would only be able to offer anecdotally. I would like to, Counselor, could I get you some specific data? If you ask me a specific data question, I will get you the data.
Yeah.
If it's about gender, if it's about ethnicity, if it's about language spoken, I can get you that information. I apologize. I would, I would only do it justice with just an anecdotal.
Okay. I wrote them down as you were talking, so I'll definitely follow up.
If you give me a data ask, I will get you that information.
So what I heard was 79.6% of those individuals that went to the ER was because they had to go for medical clearance, correct?
Well, just for whatever reason, they, it could be they responded of their own volition to the ER. You know, if we, if we saw them at the office and we felt like this person needed a, it could be a variety of reasons. So they don't all have to go there for minutes. A lot of people just frankly don't know what to do and so they go to the ER.
Right. What I, what I heard was we have great partnership with the police department and that makes me very happy to hear. What I also heard was that you had specifically said, a lot of these calls, our officers are talking and really de-escalating the situation. Is that, is that correct?
You know, a lot of the, especially in Wasco County, and I don't have nearly as much because again, we have a lot more anecdotes from Wasco County. Yeah, they, they tend to get, you know, the ratio sometimes can be five, they will get five calls before they actually call the behavioral health professionals. So they tend to try their best to, you know.
Okay. So what I'm trying to understand more of, Al, is as a, you know, licensed health professional, I know that you know a lot about having an officer respond to some of these calls when someone is on the verge of a mental health crisis and just the idea or just seeing an officer, you know, with a weapon, how that in itself can cause the, can cause a situation to escalate. So what I'm hearing, what I've heard is that some of the officers, maybe not necessarily in Hood River, but in Wasco, are being used as the behavioral health specialist to the situation. And that to me is concerning because we know that they don't have all the training that goes to really de-escalate some of these situations and some of these calls that are coming up. So with that being said, what kind of efforts is Center for Living working on that the city can collaborate and hopefully the county will as well? So that we are talking about restructuring these systems so that we're not relying on our officers to be the behavioral health specialists because they do not have the training. And what are the local diversion programs that exist to do such that, such as routing these 911 calls to a crisis center? So in this situation, routing the 911 calls to Center for Living and having Center for Living staff answer and address those phone calls. And then from there, they can, you know, figure out the situation and potentially send law enforcement or not. There are many programs in the state, in the country that exist. So what are the efforts that Center for Living is working on and how can we collaborate as a city with Center for Living to that? How can we be a better partner to you?
Sure. Great question. And I always, I always struggle with trying to be concise because you're asking a very, a very long question, which I'd love to talk with you more in depth about how to unpack. So just in a nutshell, you know, we, our Assertive Community Treatment Program is an intensive program for, they tend to be the folks that tend to utilize the emergency rooms, they tend to go to the jail more frequently, they tend to be people that are chronically mentally ill. That program has its own phone, which a client can call at any time and 911 can actually divert to the assertive, sorry, I'm really in the weeds, but the ACT phone, right? So there's on, right now, there's an Assertive Community Treatment member, you know, maybe a nurse, maybe a counselor, a mental health professional, but somebody from that team who knows that person really well, knows what their triggers, knows what maybe medications, know what calms them down, know what helps them out. So anybody on the ACT team gets an automatic, you know, divert from law enforcement. During the day, we have a jail diversion program too, and they're expected to, the same thing, they're kind of related, they're, they're folks with a serious and persistent mental illness that tend to unfortunately, you know, commit petty crimes and go to Norcore, right? They, you know, steal something or they're urinating or they're in the wrong place at the wrong time. Again, non-violent petty crimes. Jail diversion tries to respond to those folks at booking at Norcore to divert them or to respond with the officer on the street to say, okay, no officer, I know, I know, you know, John here, let me talk to John. And then the officer can take off and go about their way, you know, if a citizen called. And then behavioral health crisis. So, you know, not every one of those has to involve law enforcement. So, and many times, you know, law enforcement will consult with the behavioral health crisis worker on call and to say, we develop a kind of a little quadrant grid. So for instance, you know, if it's an unknown person and there's a public safety issue, we don't know anything about this person, but there's a, you know, maybe a weapon or maybe there's a history, something scary, that's obviously a public safety call. But the other end of the quadrant is again, one of these folks that we know very well, that law enforcement or 911 knows very well. And law enforcement doesn't have to be involved at all. And those tend to be the lion's share of those kinds of calls or those, you know, that sort of other quadrant where they are very well-known to all of us in terms of law enforcement and behavioral health. You know, maybe the person just gets overwhelmed or get, doesn't know how to, they might have some delusions or hallucinations that, you know, caused them to bother or call the police all the time. So that, that other quadrant is where we try to pick those calls off of law enforcement and not expect a public safety officer to go. And then the other two quadrants about, we respond with law enforcement, but then we, you know, depending on the acuity, sorry, I'm way in the weeds and hopefully I'm not, I'm answering your question, but you know, law enforcement might wait around the corner where they're still, you know, in other words, there might be some semblance of risk, you know, our crisis worker will take the lead, will stand at the person's threshold of their door and try to come up with a safety plan while law enforcement is still present. And then, you know, if we're concerned about some, I personally have responded many times where law enforcement, you know, is still present, six, seven, eight feet away, but I'm having a quiet conversation with the person at their door, you know, hey, your neighbors are really concerned about you, your neighbors, you know, you don't want the police here, I don't blame you. But you know, when you, when you're yelling and screaming and scaring people, of course, they don't know what to do but call the police. So, so those would be, and then, you know, we do have obviously a crisis worker that works from 7 to 2 a.m. who is, you know, really comfortable at responding to calls on his own. So I'm not sure, again, Commissioner, I'd be happy to, sorry, keep thinking I'm in the county, but Counselor, I would really be happy to unpack some of this more. I don't want to take the council's time. I'm sure you all have a late night, but I tend to get ramped up and want to talk about these things. But hopefully that answered some of your questions.
And I appreciate, I appreciate your time. I think it's definitely something that as a counsel, we really need to hear. So please, you're not wasting anyone.
Okay, good. I want to be mindful of your time.
So my last question, and then anyone else that has a question can jump in. So you just explained a beautiful situation where you were the one who defused the situation. You had a police officer just in case the situation escalated. What percent of those cases here in Hood River happen where it's you as opposed to a police officer responding?
Boy, again, I'm gonna apologize, I don't, and I don't want to just, you know, oh, it's 10%. I really am not sure if I could dignify and I would hate to steer you. What I'll do is I'll take two pieces takeaway. I will dig into our data much more clearly and I can give you a percentage. I would say anecdotally, especially Hood River City Police, I would say we get more collaborations with Hood River County Sheriff, frankly. Again, I'm just speaking anecdotally. Whereas, you know, Chief Holsey, you know, he, he has my cell phone number. He can call me at any time, especially if there's a system concern or a consultation or something didn't go right. But it tends to be less frequent with the city police. I would say the county, we tend to probably have more. And I'm not sure why that is or what that dynamic is, you know. But I will, I will commit to that and get you that information about what, you know, I would say it's, it is the rarity where it's, you know, a heavy-handed law enforcement situation. It tends to be more, hey, Center for Living, this sounds like more of your realm, can you guys take this over? And, and that's really what we train our staff to do is we really want to, we really want to take over those calls, especially if there's no public safety issue. Because like you said, it's a trauma-informed response. If it's talking to someone who looks like me versus someone who's, you know, wearing a badge and a weapon, if you've had maybe, it's very different. So.
Thank you so much for your time and I really appreciate you being here, hearing this information. We are in conversations of this at the time, so it's really crucial that you're here. And I really, really want to thank you again for being here.
Sure. One last quick tidbit I'll throw in, just, we do collaborate with all the regional law enforcement to do crisis intervention training. It's a week-long training and I know Chief Holsey's had a couple people, Sheriff English has sent a bunch of people. We've even had Crifty, the tribal police send representatives, we've had state police. And it's a week-long training on training law enforcement officers to de-escalate and respond to common behavioral health scenarios. And it's really, really practical. Anybody who's gone through it will tell you, they really come out the other end in a very different perspective, you know, much more trauma-informed, understanding why someone might not listen to their responses, how they can use the behavioral health professional. So it's, it's been a little on ice because of COVID, but we do that twice a year and it usually is fully attended with 22 law enforcement professionals. So.
Great. Others? Questions?
Tim and then Eric? Thanks, Mayor. And thank you, Al, for your presentation. Just to follow up, I guess on Gladys's request, and not, you know, let me know if this is too onerous for you, but it seems just like, if we could just like have a summary of the interactions between your organization and the Hood River City and County Police, that would give us most of everything that we need.
But would you, would you, Counselor, see that, sir, just to dig in, like, what data would help you? Like, we had X number of responses? Or would you like something more qualitative? Like, here's an example of response, what really would help you?
Yeah, I think, you know, the graphs that you presented, you know, just as long as it comes with some explanation of the acronyms.
Okay.
That would be, would be great. That level of detail and then, you know, again, any other tidbits the group provide, just as long as it's not too much to ask, because I'm sure that you have more than enough to do rather than, you know, taking data requests from us. But if it's, if you have the time and you can do it, that'd be great.
Sure. We'd be happy to partner. We really want to promote what we do. So no, I don't think, again, I'm a little frustrated with our data lately, but I will, I will, normally I can just, you know, change the dates and the parameters and we'll spit it out, but I was, I was frustrated this last week. So yes, we can do that.
Data can be frustrating, for sure.
Especially the system it delivers.
It does operate horribly. It can be frustrating as well. Like, speaking from my own personal experience.
Well, we need to get you to come help us, it sounds like.
There you go. I can do that, actually. I guess another just kind of general question is, is there, has there been, and I don't, I think, it's small, will almost seem like a loaded question, but it's really not. Are there situations that where if you had more staffing and more funding, that you feel like you could serve more people? Or do you have as much as you need right now? And again, that seems like a loaded question, but you know, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, is there something more that you need?
You know, I'll start with, and again, I talked about this with, with the city manager Fuller, you know, if we look at the continuum of care, right, which is what services do we offer people who need behavioral health supports? I think one of the critical glaring shortages, and I think it really dovetails with, I live in the city of Hood River, I know what, you know, the issues you are facing. We lack a supported housing situation, you know, where we actually, you know, again, just dreaming and scheming, you know, where there would be 20 beds of 10 long-term beds, you know, five or six moderate and then two or three really urgent beds. And that supported housing model where you actually have behavioral health onsite is really what, what I would, it'd be a great partnership to work with you all. Obviously, I think, I think Dr. Gower's joined us, she might probably answer your question more clearly about, we need resources for X and Y and Z and these types of things. Obviously, you know, sometimes behavioral health can be at the whim of the legislature and sometimes those programs can be changed. But that supported housing would be a fantastic collaboration. Again, is it going to solve every problem? Of course not. But, you know, one of the things we find is that it's, it's, in the old days, you know, we, let's get you sober, let's get you on your medication, let's get you in counseling, then we'll find you a house versus, you know, turning that on its head and let's, you know, let's, let's start with the basic need of housing. And if we have a supported housing, which could also provide employment, you have people with lived experience who lived onsite. And then those folks, we find that once they have their basic needs met, then they're much more likely to have people talk with them about, do you want to quit smoking? Would you like to get back on your medication? You know, do you want to, you want to talk about your drinking? You know, people who can de-escalate people before, you know, if there, we have people that, you know, yell, they might scream, they might behave bizarrely, they might be out on their front lawn. I mean, I'm not stereotyping people, but those are some of the challenges folks with behavioral health problems have. And if somebody's on site who can de-escalate, you know, hey, Tim, no, let's go back inside, come on, why don't you and I sit down and talk about this versus, well, I don't know, let's just call the police, he's out there yelling at the traffic, just as an example. You know, supported housing would be a fantastic collaboration. We'd love to work with the city on. You know, I don't think it's insurmountable. Sometimes there's a political will because, you know, as I'm sure all of you know, just in dealing with our houseless situation and low-income folks, sometimes even the folks we work with might be the even tier lower of, you know, those people who, but that would be a great collaboration. And it's just, there are a lot of fiscal as well as political barriers. That'd be a great collaboration. We'd love to work with you on. And we, we have committed staff who are very interested in developing and running those programs. It can be quite successful. There's really clear data. It's not like we have to reinvent the wheel. So that would be a great collaboration, which again, is it going to solve city of Hood River's, you know, housing situation? Of course not. But is it one little slice of the pie where we can actually provide some collaborative support for people who really might need it? So.
Thank you so much.
All right, Dr. Gower, she might, I'm not sure if she's on the call, but yeah, there are some funding and advocacy issues. We'd be happy to talk with the city about how to help us articulate what our community's needs are. But that's the glaring, if you ask any of our staff, you had a magic wand and you had some money, what would you, you know, what, what do your clients need? They would say something like supportive, supported ED housing, right? Supportive would be, you know, they live at, you know, the house is up by one community health and we go see them once in a while versus supported, we have supports all the time at the house, at the apartment complex, at the, whatever.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Eric, did you have a question?
I did. And it was really the same question that Tim just asked. So maybe I could just ask it a slightly different way to maybe drive it the same thing. Because I've heard, heard what you just said, which is collaborating on supportive housing would be your, your ideal. But, and I'll also preface this question to say, I'm aware that there are other organizations in the community, including for example, the Providence Foundation, the local Providence Foundation, that's thinking about maybe helping in some way in this area. So the way I present the question to you, just, you know, as a boots-on-the-ground person, be very interested in your perspective. If community resources of one or more pot could come together and add one, and I'll throw an acronym at you, FTE, full-time equivalent, a one full-time employee to help in some way with community health generally, where would you see directing, what would this one FTE, this new FTE do that in your view would most help the problem?
That's an excellent question. You know, we just got started up on a medication-assisted treatment grant. So, so you're asking like, where, what would, if the city said, we have money for an FTE, what do you want to do with it? Is that what, what I hear your question?
Yeah. And it may not be the city. You know, I am thinking of Providence, you know, if, if the community could come together broadly, take the city out of it, just think of the community as a whole. If we could come together in a way to find a new position, where would that, where would those dollars best, or that effort, that time be best spent?
You know, one of the things we really learn and the, and the state frankly has really moved us to is, you know, one model of behavioral health is, you know, I sit at my office and wait for, you know, people to come in because of their insight or their distress. We know that that, that model isn't that effective. We have for folks with severe and persistent mental illness, it's in the Dalles and in Hood River, we have what's called a consumer-run drop-in center. For lack of a better term, it's almost like kind of day programming where people, you know, often in the developmental disability world, they might have, you know, a place where they can spend the day. They can get food, they can learn some supports, they can, you know, talk about problems, they can learn problem-solving skills, learn some independent living skills. We have a model of the cottage, but it is just what it, just what we just said, it's a drop-in program. We would love to transform the cottage into more of an outreach program that goes to the community and targets those folks. Maybe that, you know, the, the police are saying, well, we can't arrest this person, they're not breaking the law. Clearly, they're, you know, having some difficulties. We don't want to harass them anymore, you know, the citizens don't do. But if we had an outreach program, so the short answer would be a facilitator to lead and target that outreach program, which could travel to the Dalles, it could travel to Hood River. So the short answer would be a facilitator to lead and target that outreach program, which could travel to the Dows, it could travel to Hood River. And it would target people that are kind of fit in what we call that gray zone, they're not clearly at that level of where they're imminently dangerous to sell for others, and you know, they're suicidal. But they're also clearly not doing well independently on their own, and so that gray area tends to be a very difficult place for our communities, because we can't compel people to do anything, you know, we can't compel them into treatment, we can't compel them to counseling. But sometimes that outreach, which is very simple, right, it's an outreach towards, what's your problem? Do you need housing? Do you need laundry? Do you need, you know, how to communicate with your family members? So I would say helping us develop and target that mobile outreach program. And a lot of the, like, and there's a program in Eugene called Kahoots, you know, which is kind of a similar type of thing, it's a, so we'd love to develop one of those types of things here. It's always challenging because of the size and the scale and all that, but there's your short answer, if you, if we develop that funding to build some type of mobile outreach, I call it kind of crisis light, meaning they're not, you know, an imminent crisis, but they're still clearly not doing well. How do we, we tend to miss on those people a lot, just because there's not a lot of remedies, and there's no stick, right? We need to use honey to encourage and pull those people and pull them on what they want, versus like, well, you need to get in, get on your pills, and anyway, you had a question, Gladys?
Yes, I wanted to kind of piggyback off Counselor Haney's question that he just asked. It sounds like definitely FTE for an outreach, but what about a program? Now, what if it's not necessarily a person, but it's a program that, whether that's the city, the foundation at Providence, or any other partner, whether that's CAC and cap dollars, like, what? If there was a program, what program would that be? And you might not have the answer for me right now, maybe I'll add that to the email, but what would that be? What would, what would a program that would be housed at Center for Living? How could we help with that partner, whether that's funding?
Well, I would probably go back to that supportive housing piece, I think that's just the, if I, I think if we queried our staff and took a, you know, a poll, they would say, we need some, that's great, we have, you know, caring staff who understand the clients, but, you know, we just don't have any place, there's no stock, there's no place for them to go. The price is too expensive, there's no place for them to live, you know, in their community where they want to live. So I guess I would knee-jerk go back to that supportive housing. I'll honor your request, though, and not just knee-jerk. Let me, let me do some more digging, I'll obviously circle back with Dr. Gower, but, and some of our supervisors and managers. I just know if our, if our manager who works with our community supports were here, that's what she would say is, we need a place for our folks to live, where they can get the supports they need, so.
Mark, did you have a question?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Al, this has been pretty neat, the number of services you guys are providing is pretty eye-opening for me, I had no real idea, the breadth of the programs we're doing, and they all seemed highly value-added, so keep up the good work. So how many FTE of actual mental health professionals do you have?
So Center for Living is going to have about 112 employees. I would say probably 75 to 80 of those are what we would call quote-unquote clinical staff, meaning they would do some type of client interaction, you know, they could be a peer, they could be a a paraprofessional, they could be a master's level doctor, you know, that range of, but they would do what we call direct services.
And then you mentioned a couple of times, it sounded like there was one person on call for crisis response. Is that, is that a truism?
Yeah, so there's, so right now, if you called our crisis team, there would be a mental health professional covering three counties. You know, over the years, we've experimented with having one for each county, but the utilization, kind of like stocking like a fire station, or it just, the utilization typically, one person can typically cover it. Now occasionally, there might be, you know, multiple calls, and we have to triage them accordingly, but that's, yeah, typically, right now, that's, that's the case, there's one person who can respond.
All right, that seems, that seems pretty thin. I've been thinking about the, you know, the crisis management and out in the field. At our house, we had a visitor from someone very clearly in crisis. We communicate very well, we didn't know who to call. When the law enforcement officers came and they were wonderful, but they aren't, they weren't able to, you know, we needed you guys here in the neighborhood. And we were told that that wasn't a possibility, they could arrest her and then get them in touch with you, but, but that, everyone, including the officers, agreed that was an unnecessarily cruel step. So to me, something felt broken, and how, how do we as a community say, you know, I don't feel that I had a unique situation, and I wasn't scary or anything, it just, someone needed help.
Right, right.
So what, how do we work together to say, how do we make those situations work better, right? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I don't want to just, you know, completely analyze that, but, you know, I would hope that, again, you know, maybe we need to do a good job with the officers to explain that, you know, again, crisis services is available, right? They can consult with you and talk about what that person might need. I know sometimes it can feel like I turn, use that term, the gray zone, you know, if the person's not imminently dangerous to sell for others. But, you know, our crisis services should, I guess, and I don't want to, you know, go back to that response, but hopefully we would respond to those types of circumstances, again. At least to, you know, to clear the scene, to make sure the person wasn't, you know, didn't need something we couldn't provide.
So should I, as a citizen, have had your phone number? I mean, how, I didn't know who to call, anyone else who knew who to call?
And that might be a good way to collaborate, too, is just to maybe, you know, the short answer is, we try not to have any wrong door. You know, if you call 911, or if you call the city police, or if you call Center for Living 24/7, they all should theoretically, you know, route to the same plate eventually to come up with the appropriate response. So I'm hearing that might be a good way to promote to the community, too, that, you know, you don't necessarily have to call the police. Now, they, a crisis worker might, you know, request law enforcement, especially if they don't know who the person is, but maybe that's a piece we could do to help citizens understand that, you know, that there are other options. But yeah, that'd be for sure feedback we'd need to hear, I'm not, you know, blaming anyone, I don't know the full circumstances, but I would hope that in those circumstances.
Guy in this scenario, it just didn't work the way I felt it, it seemed like it needed to, right?
Well, yeah, I'm concerned to hear that, yeah, and some outcomes that don't always go that, but I would, that, those are the opportunities where we really try to work with law enforcement to try to walk back and see, well, okay, what was missed? Was this a one-off, or should we could have, so. That might be a good, a good suggestion, is just to talk about how to promote, you know, to citizens, like, hey, you know, because anyone can pick up the phone 24/7 and call our crisis services, and they will try to triage the situation as best they can, so.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Sorry, I'm talking a lot. Sorry, Mayor. I'm a passionate person about this.
I know, and we're glad you are, for sure.
I don't want to monopolize your time.
Okay, I just wanted to, didn't want to leave anyone else out if they had another question for you. Okay, I guess we, we don't, so that's good. Great, so it sounds like you're going to get some data for us, at least for Gladys, and that'd be great, probably if you could get that to Rachel, and she could disseminate it to everyone, so everyone could see what that says. Good questions, Gladys.
And Gladys, I'll just send you an email just saying, when I understood the data, you know, kind of, do you want pickles with that, or do you want onions, and we'll make sure and answer your question, but thank you all for your time, and again, I'd really welcome, again, you know, if there's something Dr. Gower and I can do, if you have feedback for our agency, we, you know, we do make mistakes, but we always want to strive to do better, and we, if you want to talk more offline, I will talk your ear off and try to, if you want more data or questions, and especially if there's, you know, outcomes that where you're scratching your head, we really want to try to understand, was that a one-off or a system? So thanks for your time, I apologize for monopolizing, obviously. I do respect all of you, I think this demonstrates your interest and recognition that this is an important priority for our city, so.
No problem, thank you so much, and I think Tim had had a question for you, too, so if you could, if you could get his question in there, too, that would be great.
Okay, sure.
Okay, all right, thank you so much. All right, that concludes our presentations this evening. And so I'm going to go ahead and open the work session. Do we have any agenda additions or corrections?
No, we do not, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, so we have one discussion item, which is a housing code amendment, and Dustin, our city planning director's gonna go over that. Dustin, we can't hear you.
Sorry, I'm queuing up a PowerPoint, and I'm hoping you're not seeing my cheat sheet for my notes, so.
No, it looks like we're seeing what we're supposed to.
Oh, good, good. Well, thank you very much, tonight I'm going to provide an overview of, of the middle housing code. And the purpose of tonight's meeting is to get some council input on the draft legislation, specifically regarding some of the dwelling area ratios, some of the landscape requirements that have been discussed, and the building height methodology that we're going to present and discuss before Planning Commission next Monday. A little process and timeframe look. And for those of you who may be joining this conversation, I like to do the catch-up to try to decode some of these, some of these issues. The middle housing, otherwise known as the missing middle, is generally a category of homes characterized by duplexes, triplexes, townhomes and the cottage cluster, generally considered small, as a smaller alternative to a single-family home, but intended to be compatible in the scale and historically co-located in similar neighborhoods. Our Planning Commission has been discussing the mechanics of a middle housing code since December. And earlier this month, I came to you all as a part of the work session to discuss some of the policy issues related to the code update, specifically parking, and some of the tensions between development scale compatibility and marketability. Generally, from that, the takeaway was council was supportive of a reduced parking regulation, and did express its concern over the gap between some of the middle housing outcomes when compared to our larger and less affordable townhouse developments that are permitted by code today. With that, we took direction from council to look for ways to narrow and incentivize the development of some of the smaller units. Before we dig into the code itself, I have some, some information that was, that we've been looking at. And I wanted to circle back on something that we had previously talked about in terms of unit sizing. Initially, we weren't talking about a direct unit cap or size cap. However, as some of the amount of development is growing, or opportunity to grow, we wanted to, I did recommend a unit cap be installed, and this, this chart actually explains some of the reasons why. And this is not just a middle housing code issue, this is actually probably in all your housing code discussions, this raises some of the issues. So thanks to our, the folks at Copper West, as well as Echo Northwest, we were able to get our hands on the regional multiple listing data. This is, this chart before you is an aggregate of the 830 homes sold in Hood River over the past three years. And it takes into account the house sale price as related to unit size and the respective size, or the respective size of the dwellings. And so we're looking at this idea in this relationship of housing sale price as compared to size. And I've highlighted some of the issues when we started talking about MFI, the median family income for four, which in Hood River this year is $71,700. But what we start to look at and see is how quickly we get out of the 120% range when we get above 1,200 square feet. So that starts to reinforce this idea of the smaller dwelling units being really commensurate with the size and, and the idea of trying to, excuse me, promote a more affordable product, also really has to do with scaling some of the size of the dwelling units that we do have. So as you can see in this chart, as we get over two bedrooms, which is averages about 1,260 square feet on here, we really see this jump from 126% MFI to 150. And that sort, that actually starts to go back to relate to some of the unit size caps that we start thinking about in the middle housing code, trying to provide or focus those units in our market to those 120, 125% MFI ranges. Again, with the idea that we see this tension between larger dwelling units and the goal of promoting affordability.
Dustin?
Yes?
I just wanted to point out on that chart, too, that what I, what I noticed is that, you know, this is three years' worth of data, and the two largest categories are three-bedroom and four-bedroom houses, that's the, you know, the largest numbers that have sold. So that's what's being built on the open market. So, you know, it's kind of that category is already taken care of, so to speak. So I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, and I think that's part of the, you know, part of the code emphasis, is again, is to try to, try to backfill those other, those other smaller dwelling units that the market is not necessarily embracing right now. So if you have any questions on that, I'm going to move into code, but I thought that was something that was really, you know, it's going to be useful for our housing conversations, not only in this code, but also as you move through your other housing efforts. For this, on, just to kind of bring us back up to speed, on January 19th, staff provided and presented a revisited code to our Planning Commission. And as you heard before, we received input from various local builders and developers, including Mike Cutler of IBC, Greg Crafts, Nancy Roach, Mike Kits and Bedbridge, Nancy was, was kind enough to kind of gather their input as well. We sent some submissions to Eli Spiebeck, who some of you may have seen make the missing middle housing presentation here a couple of years back. Joe Sager of Sager Design Build has been kind enough to actually start doing some drawings and work with us regarding the housing question, or excuse me, the height question. He is a local builder, a smaller builder, but also has been a pretty, he's done some, some smaller format infill projects that are starting to test some of our previous conventions, so. A lot of these folks have been willing to submit some time and energy into, into testing this code, and also you know, doing some critical analysis of the market's willingness and ability to embrace it, so. During the public hearing, we did hear from a couple of folks, some of those who, who I've been working with on the code, and they still expressed their concern over their ability to deliver some of these smaller units intended to promote some more compact development. Their concern is not only with the code, but also really made increased by the really expensive cost of our land and limited supply. So with that, Hood, the Planning Commission delivered the code and discussed some of those issues. And we'll continue to work with our development community as well on this. So in, although Planning Commission in their meeting didn't reach a final code recommendation to submit to city council, it did, it started to increase its discussion on additional amendments and options to increase the number of units that would be allowed, and including lowering the rate or the dwelling-to-area ratio, considering a flat rate of landscaping instead of the lot area coverages, and started talking about a code methodology that would further incentivize the smaller dwelling units. And these amendments, as prepared, are included in your packet. The chart that I provided in your packet provides a bit of a side-by-side shortcut in the comparison of the existing code, my first draft or the staff draft, as well as some of the revised amendments that are being developed right now. I just want to be clear that these revisions to be presented to PC have not been deliberated, but they're coming out of the discussions that we're having with our, with our stakeholders, as well as the Planning Commission discussions. And also coming out of the concern that, this marketability concern that we've been talking about, with the intent of having a more progressive approach to smaller dwelling units to try to offset some of that marketability issue. So based tonight, on your input tonight, I will make more revisions to the So based tonight, on your input tonight, I will make more revisions to the code. And I'll present that before Planning Commission for discussions. And so, and out of those discussions, we should expect some additional refinements before this comes to City Council. So again, the purpose is to get your direction on these pending amendments that are outlined in the chart, including any preferences, concerns, or support that the council has relating to this methodology to lower the area ratio, to look at landscaping to be used in lieu of the lot coverage, and again, to look at a new methodology on how we measure height. Any, any questions before we, we dig into a couple of topics?
Dustin, could you clarify the, in this chart right here, the parking requirements for R1? Is that a typo that it's, it's now?
Yes.
Parking spaces?
The R1 got reversed. It should be 2-on-1. Currently, right now, you require two spaces per dwelling. The draft code recommended one, which we discussed with you, and, and that doesn't, that's not changing. So that actually is just, just got flipped.
Okay, thank you.
And Gladys, did you have a question?
I had the same question.
Oh, the same question, okay.
Yeah, it's two, two now, one proposed and in the first draft and one still recommended.
I, I do want to just, I want to, earlier, there was a gal, Nancy Roach, who came on and she, you know, she talked about heights and open space and common open space, you know, and look at, there's already existing housing that's similar, that, you know, there's parking in the back. When, when do we ask those questions? Because I want to learn more of those issues builders are bringing up and how we can be a better partner to meet these needs.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna touch on a couple of them tonight.
Okay.
Oh, but what you'll have is, you'll have a full code review post Planning Commission recommendation. So Planning Commission will deliberate on a lot of these issues or have deliberated and will continue to deliberate. And as we, we will develop a whole code set that has the recommended changes, so based on public input, so.
So I just had a quick question about that. Normally, it sounds like counselors aren't in those conversations, but I feel that I would learn a lot by just hearing. So is that, I mean, are the rules are that it goes to planning and we can't be a part of that conversation? Or can we join these meetings?
Absolutely. This is not, this is a legislative hearing. So it's not like when we have a quasi-judicial hearing where you have to, till the end, have your input. You're absolutely welcome to be, to be, be immersed in the, in the Planning Commission part and tend to watch that be made.
Okay, thank you.
But I don't think it's a, it's not a council discussion. It's a Planning Commission discussion, but we could listen to it.
Yeah, I'll be a fly on the wall. I just want to hear more.
And, and that's part of the reason why you've seen me so often here, is to keep bringing back that feedback loop so that you don't have to wait till the end, so that when this does come before you as the ultimate decision maker, you will have some background and, and hopefully a better understanding of how, how did we get here, so.
So I have a question. Did the, the, the information that Heather Staton submitted into our packet regarding height and fourplexes and maximum area, I think, versus floor area ratio, plus all the comments that Nancy made, Nancy Roach made today, and in her comments that she sent us, were those comments all discussed by the Planning Commission at the last meeting? Or has all this come in in the meantime?
Some of it, they provided ahead of time. So some of it was provided directly to Planning Commission last time.
But not, but not all of it?
Well, there will be both. So I don't think we do a final consensus on how they, on all of them. So I think some of their comments are pending resolution, so.
Pending resolution means Planning Commission hasn't fully discussed it, so they haven't made a finding on which way they would want to go on those questions yet?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, some of them, they did, Planning Commission did give me direction, or they, I started getting some consensus without final. And some of the, will be reflected, are reflected in these revisions to be presented back to PC. So the idea that, like, for example, the landscape element, that comes directly from some of the comment and some of the consensus that Planning Commission did arrive at. The idea that we would have different heights on, on corner lots that came out of, some of these things are being very much born out of that Planning Commission feedback.
I guess the things that aren't, that, so some of the things that came out of the feedback, it feels appropriate that we would be talking in general terms about those tonight. But the things that they haven't fully fleshed out, like floor area ratio versus maximum height area ratio, if they haven't gone through that yet, and they're like, well, maybe floor ratio is the way to go. I'm not sure that we should be discussing that if they haven't really fleshed it out yet, I guess. I'm not, I'm not sure how, it seems a little bit backwards in that way. If there's additional things they haven't discussed yet on that. Because they're the ones that usually gets in the weeds on it. That's what I'm saying.
Dustin, I think it would be helpful to go through the items specifically that you're looking for feedback on to inform the, the Planning Commission discussion. So those are the higher-level policy questions that you need some, some feedback on.
Okay.
Yep, we're, we're right there. So the three that you have, the three issues that we have right now are really some of the biggest drivers to, to outcomes. When we talk about the unit-to-site area, this is a really, this is a high-level issue and one of the main drivers to outcome. And so that's why, this is one of the first I want to talk about tonight. Some of the, you have before you on here, what your code looks like now under the current code, the draft code that we submitted, as well as some of the revisions based on the Planning Commission feedback. Typically, your R1 lots now are one dwelling unit plus one dwelling unit per ADU. And the initial draft would now allow two dwelling units on a standard lot, such as this, or, or up to six dwelling units for a cottage cluster, and that would be about 15,000 square feet. So, excuse me, here, here's the first, this is, this is your R1, 7,000 square feet, one house. That's, that's, that's the, the unit. Proposed code, approximately two dwelling units on a lot. And once we started getting into that code, we started capping the unit size. So the discussion of 1,100 square feet for a unit without a garage becomes discussed, as well as 1,500 square feet for a unit with a garage. They're kind of going back to that first slide that I talked about of promoting a smaller dwelling unit and aiming that, or targeting that towards your, your entry-level houses. The subsequent revision that you see here allows not only a detached unit, but also an attached unit. So the idea of the dwelling units are approximately the, the same. It's just the configuration becomes a little more, it becomes more flexible in the configuration on how these units look. Things become a little more dynamic when we get into R2. R2 currently allows two dwelling units on a 5,000-square-foot site. Here's our visual. The initial code that was drafted changed that or proposed that, that would be allowed one dwelling unit for every 1,500 square feet. So that would change that to three units on a site of like size. Again, with a unit size cap to really require smaller units or without the larger units to be developed. Discussion came with a revision that would further incentivize the smaller dwelling units or those 800 square feet to be built at one for every 1,200 square feet. So now we're looking at a subsequent revision that, that starts to provide even more incentive for the smallest dwelling units on a same site, increasing the number of units that can be built from initially what was two units per acre, now up to four units per, or excuse me, two units per site, up to four units per site on an R1 lot.
R2, right?
In R2.
Okay.
R3 and C1 also follow a similar, similar methodology because they, they essentially have the same site, very similar site development requirements as the R2 zone now. So the same philosophy would, would go to R3 and C1, allowing more smaller units than, at a, at a rate greater than larger units. So that's kind of a general philosophy of not all dwelling units, regardless of size, are, are allowed.
Does this allow stacking, Dustin, or could you, could you have, it would look sort of like the first picture, but they'd be two per rectangle?
It's attached and detached. So it could, they.
They can be attached vertically as well as horizontally then, I guess.
Okay, yes. Would, to a certain limit, and we'll, and we'll talk about that in, in the height calculation on why that is. But vertical, this would allow vertical stack. I would not expect that to get a whole lot of favor because of, really from, from the development community and their desire to divide these up and sell them. But we're not preempting that. I just, I would expect there to be more ground level units just out of their, their, based, based on the feedback that we've received from the Home Builders Association, as well as the builders, so. So I'm hoping that went to the next screen. So the draft code has been developed to incentivize a greater number of smaller units with incentives to have them over the large format. And before we go into landscaping and height, I'd like to take any council direction or its preference on, on this progressive idea of more smaller units at greater ratios. And I'll incorporate that into the revised drafts for legislation before Planning Commission review on Monday.
Did those drawings reflect the 70% coverage, lot coverage instead of the 50%?
No, they didn't. That'll be, that'll be the next one. So that, we'll, we'll work at the, what the landscape looks like and, and area coverage.
Jessica, did you have a comment?
I was just curious, Dustin, if you did or if the Planning Commission did talk about the idea of the floor area ratio.
They didn't, they didn't dive into it too much. We did get those comments, but they didn't discuss the floor area, floor to area ratio as the, as the methodology.
Do you think they will next time?
Oh, we, we can. And I, I don't know if it got too much traction because it's such a departure from, from what we, how we evaluate them now. If we want to evaluate them side-by-side, this is kind of what the current code looks at. We do essentially have a floor-to-area ratio. We just base it on, currently now, on coverage and height. So you can limit, we limit the amount of coverage on a lot and we, we cap the height. That, that essentially becomes the metrics of Florida area. So we do get at it. We just don't express it in that, the terms of FAR.
I'd like to have it looked at more thoroughly, if we could, just in general terms. But let's go ahead with this discussion. That's just an aside. Gladys?
It says question. So this is over, or you still have more to share with us?
No, that's just part, part one. And I'm looking for feedback on just the idea of this, this more progressive approach to zoning an area that smaller units are able to be built at lesser area rates.
Tim? And then Megan?
So Dustin, you had mentioned that, that the, the edited, updated code revisions are going to incentivize smaller units. Can you tell, can you explain what that part of it, I can see how it will allow more units. I'm not sure how it's incentivizing.
Well, part of the, the code will allow a greater number of units to be built on a, on a piece of real estate. The code itself is a process preference to smaller units. So it allows a non-discretionary land use approval, or some people would call it an expedited land or an expedited permit review. That's a procedural benefit to doing this. As we get into the next pieces, it will also allow for more of the lot itself to be developed in terms of preferential treatment on, for smaller units to be able to use a larger amount of the lot itself, so.
Do you have some, some indication that it's actually, I mean, incentivizing, it means to me that, you know, somehow it's as profitable or more profitable to build the units being smaller the way that the code is than not. Is that, is that true? Have you looked at that?
Yeah, I, I'm going to have a couple of developers provide me a performa, one over another, before I come back to you. The turnaround from the last Planning Commission to now was not, was not enough time for them to do that, but I, I will have a couple of performas. So when I speak to incentives, I'm not speaking to a monetary, I'm definitely not speaking to a monetary incentive.
You're talking about just having more houses being able to be built?
Yeah, a regulatory incentive.
It seems more like a regulatory allowance to me than an incentive, but.
Yeah, well, I guess as compared to the baseline when it's not permitted, like, that would, I guess that's, that's where we're starting from, so, not permitted, so.
It's only, it's only an incentive, and it's actually means something monetarily, other than that. It's typically not.
I think it's just that they get more units, so they make more money. You know, if we can only sell two houses on that lot, then we get X amount. If we can sell three or four houses on that lot that costs us $300,000 to start with, then it's an incentive.
It could be an incentive, just as long as it's as profitable to do it.
Right, exactly, yeah. Usually more, more front doors is, usually more front doors is more profitable. But I'll leave that up to the developers. That's their, that's their thing. Anything else, Tim?
No, I think Mark has, he has it.
Yeah, Megan did too. So I was going to go to Megan next. I think she had her hand up, and then Mark.
Thanks, Kate. Um, yeah, so I guess, big picture, more smaller houses is absolutely what I'm looking for out of the missing middle code. You know, with, with what Kate said of the mechanism to get there, I don't know enough about it to say that maximum unit is, is better or different than the floor area. I do, you know, in Heather's letter mentioning the more unconventional lot sizes, you know, kind of like the, the current mechanism potentially limiting the number of units is a concern for me. I also, I'm going to just throw this out there, but is there a reason we've got like a maximum unit versus a minimum unit? Because I'm certainly aiming to get as many houses as we can, which is limiting the number.
On, on the minimum, there's a minimum unit set on there at two. Really, that, that starts to reflect the change from one full dwelling unit in R1 to more than one, which is, was, is a change. The upper limit has to do with these developments being permitted outright. So no land use, no land use process, no public process or discretionary land use review or notice. So the idea of putting a cap on there limits the general size of these developments. And it also is targeted towards more of an infill project rather than large format to where you would, you may experience more of a, a request or desire to have a, a community or public-facing process. These will be permitted, the intent in the code is written, for them to be permitted, subject to building permit, no public or notice. So that's part of the reason why the upper cap. But there is definitely space. If, if there was a minimum threshold, you know, there's, there's reasons to, to. You know, there's reasons to promote that as well. Something I thought about. I would, it's definitely in council's purview to set that. I would just hate to miss the two unit. The two unit opportunity because if we, if we had a too small unit that we're looking at in the R1.
And I mean, just to say it, we already have two units in the R1, so to speak, as you can do an ADU. So, I mean, it just could be done differently, but it's, I mean, people may think, oh, this is a huge change, but it's just making it easier for people to be able to do it. But we do allow two units right now with the ADU. So. Go ahead, Mark.
So same goals as Megan, little different direction though. If the developers were able to put, you know, get a three bedroom into, you know, 1,300 square feet. Can they squeeze the balloon that way? So you have two units, but one's 1,300 and one's, you know, 900. Or some such mix. But being able to, we saw in that data that there was pretty high demand for three bedroom stuff. And it seems to me that you could get a three bedroom decently small footprint. You know, almost about where in the range that we're talking about with the goal of, you know, 125% ish. Like you said. So that would be one thing I would wonder if you could look at. And then I was also thinking that, you know, we're talking about giving them more flexibility, which I think is good. But these aren't the, the development stuff isn't the only incentive package, you know, we, you know, we'll talk at some point about other carrots that might, if we get close, it might put it, you know, push it over if we can add you know, SDC or some other benefits that get close. So I don't know that our goal needs to be that it has to be a Excel sheet. You know, benefit for this, just from the development side. So that's something. And then lastly, I'd like to see the cartoons, once we get to with this discussion, sort of seeing the pictures like you showed last time. You know, what's the difference between the 50% coverage and 70% coverage? Cause compatibility with neighbors is still gonna be a big, big thing that I'd love. I don't want to trade that completely off against more units, because I think that it's gonna be a splitting motion. I'm hoping that we can find the combination of compatibility and more units. So, thank you.
Others? Comments on the numbers that Dustin has given us tonight? Eric?
Yeah, I think I would just echo Mark's very last comment about the compatibility. As this discussion proceeds, to me, that's an important, very important topic. And one way maybe that gets split up is maybe there's less of this kind of densification in R1 and more of it in the areas that were sort of meant to be that way in our zoning, which is R2 and R3. But I'd be very interested in how the discussion proceeds.
I'll go. And then others. I think that the denser numbers are better, just in general. I'd like to see the pro formas that the people, that the builders are gonna get us. Cause I think that's the proof's in the pudding. And if it doesn't work for them, they're not gonna build it. All this that we're doing is for naught. So we need to get feedback from them to find out what they will do. Does it work or not? And they're pretty dang creative being able to, you know, doing all that stuff at Katie's Way along that stream and Joe Sager's new developments he's doing. I mean, the thing that, I can't remember who built it, but it was Joel Knutson did. On a very skinny little lot, an up and down unit, beautiful, beautiful place on a very small lot. And it's really done nicely and looks good. So I am for higher density in general. However, we can make it happen as long as the builders are saying, yeah, we will build that if you let us. Others? Gladys?
Yeah, Kate, I love the way that you phrased all of it. I will echo every word that you said. I really feel that I am not informed, well informed to make some of these decisions of like, I think this is gonna work well. I really, really want to send this back to our planning and to have developers who have already done this, such as Doug, such as Mike, such as everyone else that Kate mentioned. And really feel, would feel much more confident making a decision, knowing that they've already given their perspective before we make our final.
Others?
I'll just say that, yeah, I was fine with the revisions that you showed us tonight, Dustin.
Megan?
I'm probably gonna just be echoing Kate and Gladys, but I, yeah, I think it's super important and I'm really excited that Dustin has been getting input from actual builders to see if this code will work and will result in things. I really don't want us to end up in a situation like the ADU thing where we overregulate and try to protect our neighborhoods from something and then just have a blockade for 10 years and get nothing done. If we're like, we're doing this and it's super important because we absolutely need all of these housing units to be built. I want us to get to a point where they were actually gonna get built. And that is absolutely my top priority. So, thank you, Dustin.
That definitely gives me, that gives me the direction I need on part one in terms of my revisions and markup to planning commission. So, thank you. Next step, another middle code revision or one of the adjustments came to the lot area coverages and some of the open space requirements for the cottage and middle housing. Currently, you have no landscape requirements for your single family dwellings, duplexes, or individual townhouses. And we rely on a lot coverage requirement that caps the amount that you can dedicate to building parking lots and driveways. So after our initial code discussion with planning commission with the draft that include, it included a unit by unit dedication of private space, common open space, lot coverage standard, open space requirement. Planning commission rep gave me some feedback that it really was more favorable to a simplified approach. To where we used the site area landscaping in lieu of the lot coverages. And the recommendation that I'm gonna go back with is based upon the planned unit development requirements. Where the amount of area is dedicated. So right now, we rely on a 30% flat rate. And I will prepare some standards that go along with that. In regards to the amount of yard area and setback requirements that would be required. Really trying to boil this into clear and objective standards. That's one of the very much of, one of the guiding principles is we need clear and objective standards for these if we're going to just move to permit on them. So essentially that becomes tree counts, shrub counts. And we'll have some incentive in there as mathematical as possible for the preservation of existing trees. So like a PUD, the site is, these sites will also be evaluated at a whole, not on an individual lot by lot basis. And if you look at the code, or excuse me, at the two blocks, the eight bit blocks in your slide. That's the difference in the delta between the upper site is an R1 site. With its existing 48% maximum coverage. The bottom represents a 30% landscape area to some extent, which is about a 22% change between the two. It's probably, that's the largest change in our, is reflected in the R1 zone. It's the most restrictive zoning now. And if it went to a flat site or a flat rate of landscaping, you see the largest delta. And that's kind of really almost the scale representation of what 22%, or excuse me, what 48% and what 70% looks like on a, on a site.
Megan?
Dustin, did you say like current PUDs are meeting this 30% landscape requirement?
Yeah, current PUD is 30%.
Okay, so like Stella Lane or Katie's Lane?
That's what they would.
That's what those would look like in real life.
Yeah, that's what they're, that's what the standard that those were charged against were.
The cohousing development was the same way?
Cohousing was actually less because it's a multifamily. Cohousing was not required to meet a 30%. They were required to meet, I believe, 20%. But it far by exceeded it just by virtue of including the Adams Creek as well as.
Oh, okay.
So it was held to a lesser standard, but it far, it exceeded that standard by way of amount of landscaping and open space dedicated to it.
Okay. And when you say, when you say we don't have a landscaping requirement right now. It just means you put in your house, you get your, you get your building permit and, you know, build the house. And then if the whole thing's gravel, the whole thing's grass, the whole thing's weeds or blackberries, it doesn't matter. There is not, there is no code that says you have to do anything other than you might have some street trees required by your sidewalk area. That's it. You could just let the whole thing be dirt if you wanted to. But this code says, no, you can't do that. You've got to landscape it. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. It's the, it's the exchange of, we're not going to limit a code, so your previous example would say, but you cannot build the whole thing or use parking. We're going to cap it in this instance at 40%. And whatever happens to the rest of it is the rest of it. This one is looking kind of at it from a different perspective, saying you need to put in 30% landscaping. And that's the, and that's the requirement. So rather than the individual lot coverage.
Jessica?
I was, so because it has to be 30% landscaped, then it doesn't take into account the like slopes and natural areas, like wetlands that Nancy mentioned. Is that true?
It could, that could be included in the calculation.
Would that be part of the 30% landscape required or not because it's not landscaped? Like you could landscape a slope but not a wetland.
You could leave it, you could leave it undisturbed. I mean, I think that's, that's one of the provisions in the code that we were gonna clarify is could ends and sloped areas that remained undisturbed or environmentally constricted be counted towards a common open space or an open space requirement? I think that started losing favor when we started getting away from this idea of common open space and just saying, this is how much landscape area you have to have. So it's, it's an order to simplify it.
I would be in favor of, and I know this is, it's getting complicated. I'm probably not understanding it all, but I would be in favor of encouraging people to include the slopes and wetlands in their open space. I don't know if that means landscaping. And I also, Mark kinda said this a little bit, but it does seem like I feel like that the 70% lot coverage looks like it would be difficult to integrate with the neighborhoods. If we're, you know, mostly talking about infill development. And I recognize that that's what's allowed right now in PUDs. But I have to admit, I'm not super excited about the 70% block on the screen.
Yeah, I can show you what this looks like in the, in the R2 and R3 as well. So in the R2 context, the difference between what the, your lot. What your maximum lot coverage looks like is in the upper left. It's been essentially 50/50, 50% coverage, 50%. It's not landscape area. It's not parking lot, not not driveway and not house. So your patios, your decks under four feet, your gravel can all be in excess of that. And to the, the lower part is what 70% looks like essentially on a 5,000 square foot lot.
I just want to throw something out here on this because we're talking about the percentages here. And, you know, I like, I like the way that green looks. That looks wonderful. More green, the better, of course. But when we get these performers back and, you know, they may say, we can't do this unless it's 70% that we can cover in 30% landscaping. So I don't, it's really hard for me to say, oh, I want more green, when we don't know if that's gonna work for the developers. And there's another way it can work for the developers, what we haven't even talked about. And if we go higher, then we don't have to take up as much space. But we're talking about, you know, 25 or 28 feet. If you let them have another story, then they can maybe do something more creative. And we could have more green space. So I'm just, you know, I've always talked when I was on planning commission. Do you want more lot coverage? Do you want more height? You know, if it doesn't pencil, we've got to talk about one, potentially talk about one or the other. So just, just keep that in mind while, while we're discussing this. Mark?
Yeah, I'm wondering about enforcement of landscaping and definition of landscaping and how that would be done. So can everything be patio containers in this landscape? Is, or is it, and how do we, how do we know, how do we manage that, I guess is the question?
Really, the, I would, I would say the most clear and objective way is to require planting rates. That we count, we count trees and we count shrubs.
Is part of the inspection process in the, in the building thing?
Prior to certificate of occupancy, those would need to be required to be installed. Not, no different really than the way that we deal with street trees right now. When we have an inspection, the street trees have to be installed. If it's not at a time when it's seasonally be favorable for that, like if we're in the middle of high wind in July, we're gonna, we'll take a bond and we'll hold that money until it's installed and then we'll release the bond.
So our, our expectation is that other outside spaces, patios and porches and such are within the 70%?
We would clarify, we would clarify that. So it's, yeah, within the, what does the landscape look like? We would clarify essentially in what will qualify clearly.
Thank you.
But hard surfaces usually lot coverage area, not landscaping, correct? Cause it's.
A patio, the difference would be a hard surface parking space would be lot coverage. A hard service patio would not be lot coverage.
Okay.
So that's important distinction though, because that would be something we would absolutely need to have clarified of what counts and what does not count.
Tim?
Thanks, Mayor. So it seems like we're increasing the impervious service a lot, right? Has there been any thought to adding the landscape? Be low impact development and have some type of eye towards mitigating the stormwater wrath in this sense?
Yeah, actually, the first draft code, the first three provisions encourage LID for the purposes of low mitigation. It's, it's the first thing. They're not requirements because we don't have a full stormwater management manual. But they're the first three things that are mentioned in, in the first version of the draft code was to encourage the use of low impact technologies, natural technologies to mitigate, mitigate stormwater.
When we're moving to a situation where we have 70% lot coverage, it might actually be behooves to require it as opposed to encourage it. And so what I'm hearing you say Dustin is that we can't require it until we have that manual. Is that correct?
Well, we will require stormwater mitigation by vehicle of LI, we don't have a formalized LID vehicle yet that we could, that I could look to and saying, here's the engineering, final engineering standards of LID. that we could, that I could look to and saying, here's the engineering, final engineering standards of LID. So the developers will have to mitigate for stormwater. Um, the method, we want to encourage them to do it in LID.
Well, it has, it has real implications, right? By increasing the water coverage that much in our stormwater system, potentially.
Well, uh, they will have to mitigate for it. So I mean, that's the, there's still the requirement to treat, stormwater prior to the release.
Right, but you know, that's, I'm looking at the thin, thin green line around the, the white space there. And I'm, I'm not seeing it, the stormwater retention pond there.
Correct. Yeah. If you, if you were to go 70%, um, most likely you're not getting a surface pond. You would be doing some other treatment for control. Deeper vault. With, with a density or intensity of that, you're probably looking at a more of a structure, less of an LID system. If you wanted to meet the max, or if you wanted to just do the minimum, uh, landscape requirement.
Thanks, Justin.
Megan?
Uh, yeah, this might be more opinion than question, but I, I guess I'm hearing from some folks that these boxes on the screen sound, look scary and I, um, from my end, knowing what our actual PUDs look like on the ground and in real life, like I'm perfectly comfortable with this 30% requirement. And they in, in real life feel far more comfortable and, and have already been built in our ones and seem like they fit pretty well. So I think trying to, if we're trying to do things that are PUDs without having all the requirements and trying to match PUD standards, perfectly reasonable.
I, I live next to a new development that you, uh, Joe Sager's doing and he's building right now. Um, also the ADU we just built is next to two PUDs, one on each side of the alley. And, um, and I'm fine with the amount of lot coverage for those. So I'm okay with the 70%. Others?
Well, if I could just kind of like briefly follow up in, in mine, my comments about stormwater are not necessarily whether I like it or not. Um, I, I think that there are very real implications associated with having that amount of impervious service. So it's not, you know, whether I like it or not, it's actually kind of a real, physical consequence, consequence of that. And you know, I think Dustin's answer covered my concerns, in that somehow the runoff is going to have, going to have to be mitigated.
And it, it did before too Dustin, on the PUDs, it had to be mitigated on those PUDs too, correct?
That's gr, that's correct.
Okay. Other thoughts? Anyone? Eric?
I guess I, I do agree with Counselor Saunders that the market has a way of, making things nice because that's what the market needs to do. It's good, because I am pretty scared by the gray box. And not just a stormwater issue that Tim raises, but just kind of livability and high density. If we don't have a good park plan, I know we believe we do, but if we don't have a good park plan, I'm reminded of my trip to San Francisco right before COVID where it was all houses everywhere, no parks anywhere, and just concrete. And I just don't know that that's Hood River. So I am candidly a little scared by that gray box. I like Megan's point about the market. Will probably aid that and go, go, thanks for getting rid of off the screen. Um, but whether it's on the screen or not, it just worries me, about density a bit. Um, so anyway, um, we do have a livability factor here and, you know, we also have a circumstance where Portland sort of exploding. We have all these people potentially coming out here. I'm also thinking who's going to buy these and are we, are we up densifying for someone other than our community? I'm not sure. But anyway, uh, I have not taken any firm positions on all this because like some others said, I feel like I've really got to get smarter on these, technical land use issues before I start taking any firm positions, but that's what I had to say.
Anyone else? I think you've pretty much gotten feedback from everyone Dustin. Kind of a mixed review, but.
Yeah, that, that one is a mixed, uh, more mixed bag. So we'll, we're going to proceed with that and let planning commission do its work.
Okay.
I'm going to try to bring back my, uh, my presentation that I, that I shut down mid, sorry, sorry Commissioner. Or Counselor Haney, I didn't mean to shut you off there, so.
That's, or I have been called the commissioner twice this meeting, so maybe I'm due for a promotion. No, just kidding.
I think that, that, that got contagious, that got contagious quick. Excuse me while I, while I, get to our, so the last one was, um, is, is R3. And, uh, I think my screen jarring is paused. Hopefully, hopefully you can see the screen again.
Yep.
Okay. Um, so this is the instance of now of R3, uh, which looks pretty similar. As I mentioned, the R1 was going to have a, um, has the biggest delta. The R3 has about a 7% delta, uh, between what R3 looks like today to the upper, uh, my upper right and to the lower. So, um, that's, that's kind of your, your delta between the two. Um, relatively, relatively small, um, in that respect. So this was where I was going to ask questions, uh, or your comments regarding landscaping, but you, uh, well, we're, we're not, we're not shy. So thank you for, uh, for getting to that. Uh, the last issue that, uh, we're going to look at is, uh, is the building height development standard. This is one you heard about earlier, in regards to some of the, um, some of the concerns that were expressed about the, the proposed building size. Part of the issue in the look of the code had to do with looking at a new methodology for compact housing. Our current code if, has some serious issues when it comes to trying to implement, compact development, when it comes to, um, how clear the code is written, uh, in terms of ability to administer it, um, the expectation of developers, the expectation and review of staff. Uh, the current code also allows or has some issues when it comes to building on slopes and some, pretty different results that can occur, uh, between the size of the units. Uh, and it also relies on the development to be measured from, uh, the pre-development conditions, which presents some real issues when it comes to trying to build a multiple unit, in a compact way with multiple buildings, uh, where these units rely on shared stormwater facilities or stormwater drainage. Oftentimes shared parking areas, shared utilities, uh, and shared driveways. So if we are looking at pre-development conditions on sites that really need to be balanced in order for them to work as a unit, pre-development conditions really lead to some, some difficulties, uh, when it, when it comes to actually designing these things. And I, I haven't heard this so much from the development community, but, I will, or I would, um, based on, uh, on some of these issues and just based as a, as a code administrator. Those are some of my concerns. Um, when we looked at, this is a side by side on how our code is administered now. To the left is how we currently administer the code. 28 feet is the stated height requirement in R1, R2, R3 zones. And then, up to 35 feet and in C1, we measure on a slope site from the high side. Or we measure on a slope that has more than 10 feet. 10 feet up from the lowest point, which results and can result in a 38-foot building height. This is a, this shows and presents an issue not only for scale and compatibility, but this also results in an issue for, some advanced firefighting and response. A, a building that has three stories and this is, this would end up and does end up, as you've noticed across town as a three-story building. We require some extra access points, uh, and a 26-foot wide drive lane to access, and respond to these, um, emergency responses in, in these locations. Um, so the height issue becomes a buildability concern on infill, especially when we don't have these houses up to the street. When we have some of these cottage clusters and they're, they don't have frontage requirements, um, they're removed from the street. We could end up essentially using our entire lot site to accommodate a, a fire truck turnaround and access.
So on Serpentine, there's three tall houses, uh, another one currently going in. And so that would, this applies to that, those homes, this 28 feet on the high side and then the tall on the low side?
Do, those all have the frontage onto the street? Oh, yes. Yes, it would.
It does. Okay. All right. So there are three stories on the downhill side.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and you'll notice, um, in your, in your travels across town, those lots that sit uphill that are, I would call them typically on the, on the south side of the road, you could notice an apparent mass and change based on that. Um, they usually, they have the view lots. Uh, they also take advantage of, of this height and you'll see them. You know, you, you see them a lot on the Eugene, uh, Hazel, Serpentine, those infill lots. You will notice, those are technically built in many of them to 28-foot tall standards. And you can see what 28-foot, um, can look like, on a slope lot. Uh, so the response to that is, is really coming up with a code methodology that is fitted, towards the middle housing. Um, and in this code that shows kind of really reflects the right, uh, to the right here, a 25-foot building, height max to the ridge, uh, but now measured not from, uh, from an average grade. So the idea of trying to take the average lot grade, uh, to limit these to two stories, not three stories, and to be responsive to some of those scale issues as well as some of our, um, our responder issues. The code also calls into, excuse me, and specifies different roof types, including, uh, the flat roof as well as the, the shed roof a- at different height requirements. Also with the goal of allowing a two-story development, but not a three-story development. Um, with the way that we measure in Hood River, there is very much a reason why we don't see pitched roofs on, on some of our townhouses. When we measure to the ridge or the highest point, you end up with a flat roof. I mean, that's, that's a pretty common, result. And, and you can see that pretty common result playing out in our, kind of in our built environment. So, uh, what we did here, and this is kind of a, how it looks at the code, we did hear from the development community and are still hearing from the development community, that, uh, limiting this height is going to make for a challenge in, in allowing them to go vertical and, and allowing for more units to go vertical. And that's where that tension and balance becomes, um, becomes an issue. So what we've done and in response to that is on the corner sites, there's now, um, a revision that suggests a three-story on a corner. Uh, a three-story, story or a corner or 28 feet will allow, uh, our first responders to use both street accesses, uh, the front and the side to, um, to respond and, and provide access. It's also on the compatibility side. You're not going to end up with a, a building size or a 28-foot, measurement that is, uh, against someone's house, uh, uh, within five feet or six feet of, of a neighboring dwelling. So it also responds to that scale and compatibility issue. And some of the, and, and so we looked at, that's, that's really how we're, um, how we're adjusting that now. Um, looking at some of the alternatives to housing height, um, having some exhibits. And I, I think you may have been provided some of the exhibits that we were looking at, um, uh, via email from, from the public, in tr, in trying to dial in, what is the appropriate height requirement? What is permissible? Uh, and what, what kind of fits into that sweet spot of buildability as well as compatibility and scalability. So.
Oh, go ahead Dustin.
Oh yeah, I'm re, I'm ready for any.
Okay, all right.
Questions and comments.
Uh, Gladys?
So I just want to make sure that I understood that last piece correct. Uh, what, what I heard or what I think I heard was, the reason there is a limit on the height right now is because we need to make sure that we're leaving appropriate space for emergency vehicles to have access in and out of these potentially very high levels. Correct?
I'm sorry, there, you buzzed at the last part. I think the, it was, well, that's part of the reason is when you end up with a third story, uh, there becomes a increased requirement for fire protection that, we're trying to kind of match the limited access and the depth and the cluster development and those compact, small infills, with probably some real limitations that would prevent that. So.
But this is something that you'll take back to, to the builders and you guys are going to have another conversation around how we can better partner to meet this height requirement?
Yeah, uh, I'm, we're going to continue to look at it, but I guess I was looking for council direction on, on what do you feel about the methodology? Do you have any input on, on the heights? Because I know you've, you've also been approached on and asked for some, some of this narrowing of the gap. Is there?
So what I specifically want to say about height is that it, it exists. We've seen it in other cities. And so, I, if it means more houses that we're going to be able to build more, I'm, I'm okay going up. Uh, and to look at other models that we could replicate, you know, customize to fit Hood River, and replicate. So we're not reinventing the wheel. But again, I feel that I don't have enough of that knowledge to guide you, uh, specifically in that.
Anyone else? Megan and then Mark?
I'm going to probably ramble a bit, but Dustin, can you talk about, it's like, if the point is just to limit to two stories versus three, but given you could have a flat lot that does one thing with, you know, the 25 or 28 foot and you can have this steep lot that does a completely different thing with the same standard, is there not a simpler way to just say two stories?
Yeah, that, that would be one approach, two stories. It just is what, we would need to be real prescriptive about what does that mean?
Okay.
A single story that ends up being 28 feet tall with a mezzanine and loft in it.
I mean, yeah, fine, there'd be limits, but I guess, I mean, I, you know, I see your issues with methodology. I don't want to change them just for one type of building and not for all of them. But if, if, you know, I, you know, to Gladys's point, if smarter people than me think the methodology is broken, then, then fine. You know, in, in the scale of why we would be limiting the size of these developments, we want to happen to be smaller than any other development that could happen on the same lot. Does feel weird to me. Um, and certainly I have concerns that we've heard from multiple folks that, you, you just can't get a second story out of this 25-foot limit, uh, which severely restricts what can be done with the property. I, I definitely like that to be looked at more by folks that understand it better.
Mark?
Yeah, thank, thanks. Um, I, I like the proposal with the corner being taller. I like that you showed all the other forms. So I guess I don't really have a good feeling for how it competes with the other things that they could build on the same lot. You know, are we, are we skewing it one way? And then the last thing I was just noodling on was, if, if you have tall things on adjacent properties, it seems to me that we don't have the, it's a different issue with respect to compatibility. So can we allow, even taller in places where it's not interfering, right? So if, if you, I don't know, I, I don't have a good example, but if there's, if you have a lot in between two of these duplexes that are 30 feet tall, you know, we should, this should be allowed to be 30, 30 whatever feet tall. So, um, I don't know how you manage that, but it seems like there's some cleverness that could be done to have one set of rules of you're next to a one-story building and another set of rules of your next. and another set of rules of you're next to a three-story building.
I think the only issue with that, Mark, is there's so many old, really tiny, small. You know, I guess I'd call them inadequate, functionally obsolete. That's what they call it in real estate. You know, built in the 1930s or 20s, not, not a well-built house that was old, but you know, just a barely functioning house with no insulation and asbestos and the whole nasty everything. And, and it's like, like, like the one we own. And you know, it's, somebody's not going to spend, if they're going to buy that property, they're likely going to tear that house down. And then the house next to it's the same way. And then within the next five years, that's a one-story, it's not going to be there either. So I mean, you, you know, being compatible with something that's probably going to be torn out in three to five years is like, well, yeah, it might be compatible, but.
Well, to be clear, I'm, I'm saying that Dustin's proposal, actually the, the modification to the proposal is okay in any case. And then I'm saying, is there, are there even cases beyond that where we can go plus one?
Okay, I see what you're saying. All right. Gladys, did you have another comment?
No, I feel like you guys cleared that up on that last piece.
Okay.
I do just want to mention this, Dustin, I am very grateful and thankful and I appreciate all the work that you're doing right now to just have these conversations with developers. I know it's, you know, a lot of time and effort, so just thank you so much for putting that time to really, to bring this back to us. And I just unfortunately feel right now that there's still, there are still limitations that are too restrictive. I do not know the best solutions for those, so please continue to work with developers as you are. Again, just very grateful for, for your work. Thank you.
Jessica?
Sorry.
Oh.
And I was just going to say that I, I support having it be a two-story limit. And I, I don't have a good thought on the methodology. It sounds like you've got a lot of smart people working on that and trying to figure out how it will actually work. But I, I do like the idea of the two stories. And I'm, you know, Mark's idea about if, you know, if you've got three stories on both sides, then allowing that. I'm okay with that, too.
Eric?
One thought that comes to mind, that if we do adjust the height limit for a home, there undoubtedly are many people who've built their own existing homes based on some understanding about what the existing rules were at the time. So you could have obstructions of views that crop up. So part of this compatibility question would be, how do you deal with a new house that, because of the new rules is going to block a view that otherwise wouldn't? We might hear from people on that. It would be kind of tilting the scales in favor of the new people rather than the people who built under the old set of rules. I realize you always had that to some degree, but three-foot additional height could introduce risk to obstruction of views. So that's undoubtedly something planning commission will be thinking about as they deliberate these.
So are we, are the proposed things are to reduce the height, not expand the height, right?
Yes.
So we go in the opposite direction?
We're going, I'm sorry, Nancy, I just misunderstood. You're saying we're lowering the height?
I mean, that's what the proposal.
That's what the proposal is.
Has been.
Okay, I'm sorry, I must have misunderstood. That's not what I thought it was, so I apologize.
So we went from, I believe it used to be 33 or 35. Is that right, Dustin? I mean, you, I don't think you were planning director then, but I think.
My house, my house is 35 under old rules.
35, okay. So we were at 35 and then we went to 28. So now we're asking about 25.
Okay. Sorry, I misunderstood. Point withdrawn.
Personally, I, I think it should be 28. I think it should stay the same as it is. I don't, I don't see a reason to change it to 25. I'm not for saying it needs to be two stories. I, I think we can get more housing if we say it can be three. But I personally don't have to have all the houses look like cottages. Not that I don't love a cottage. I made my house look, try to look like, you know, a 1920s lap siding house, even though it was an old 1970s rancher. So I love that style. I love that look personally. But I also am okay with modern. I'm okay with flat roofs. I'm okay with shed roofs. And I think if we get really restrictive on all this, it's just going to limit more things of what, what can be done. So I don't have to have all of Hood River look like cottages personally. So I'm okay with leaving it at 28 feet, which it, you know, just seems like it's more equitable to everything else. Gladys?
I just, Kay, I love the way that you said that. I, that's exactly what I wanted to speak to. I've heard compatibility, what's compatible in the last couple of minutes. And I think that we have to remember that we're trying to build equitable housing for those who are very oppressed and don't have housing at all. So when we say, what do we want Hood River to look like? We want it to be equitable and inclusive of everyone, regardless of their socioeconomic status. So when I hear, what do I want Hood River to look like? Well, what it's looking like right now is not the Hood River that we're all talking about because it does not include equitable living housing options for those with diverse socioeconomic statuses.
And I guess I just, I want to add one thing on to Gladys. You know, this is not affordable housing that we're, we're making. This is the middle, missing middle. It's not subsidized, but we, if we can make it some less expensive and some smaller, there'll be a lot more opportunities for people to move up and move in that don't have those opportunities right now.
On that, I'm also going to say, if we could build a lot more, the chart Dustin showed us at the beginning of this was that 22 units have been built of, of one bedroom in the last, or have been sold in the last three years. Like that's, that's basically nothing. Functionally, anyone who's trying to find a one-bedroom, there is nothing available. That's a huge problem for our community and different housing, their family sizes.
Yeah. And I think, you know, when you say, well, they're buying three-bedroom because people want three-bedroom. Well, all they're building is three-bedroom. So it's, it's not like they have a whole lot of choices out there to buy a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom. So, you know, I think you say, well, well, that's because people want it. Well, there's enough people that can afford it, that can move here, that want those three bedrooms, yes. But there's also people that want one and two bedrooms that it's not being built. Others? Comments for Dustin? Tim?
I have a question. Who is the, would if somebody were to have like a shed roof and were to put solar panels on top of it, would that count as building height? If they were kind of like angled up?
That could be something that could be built in, is what, what is the limit? So certainly we, we could definitely have a, some sort of allowance for that. So right now the shed doesn't indicate that. And even on a pitch drill, if you could have that indication, although typically you don't breach the, the ridge on a, on a solar install. We could definitely have allowances for solar install as a permitted height obstruction.
I think that would be, be a good idea. So is the reason why we're changing this is because it's broke? I kind of, kind of heard that, that it was kind of a fire or safety concern. Is that really the primary reason?
Oh, I guess it depends on who you ask, but certainly in the housing needs analysis in our, in our comp plan recommendation, there was a, there was a strategy to look at, how do we measure height? I'm saying by first-person practitioner, it's extremely difficult to do these measurements. And it's a constant source of dispute, if you will, between, between builders and staff. It's also, in this instance, not necessarily the best, it's not necessarily the methodology. So, you know, one thing is, you know, we may, we may want to look at, how do we measure height? Whether it's 25 feet, whether it's 28, it's the idea of how do we, how's the philosophy of measurement? Because when, when we say it's a 28 foot height and it ends up being 38, that's not necessarily the most trans, you know, doesn't really translate. So I think we've identified issues with it to the point where thinking about it in a compact, frontage-free, smaller format development is, raises issues. So I wouldn't say it's broken. It has raised issues.
So is it true that using the methodology, you may not have actually a shorter building? Using average slope?
I think in the, the methodology that's proposed, you end up with shorter building.
Interesting.
Would you move these height definitions to existing form allowances? You know, a single house on our one, two townhouses? I mean, what, why would it have to be a different answer to, you know, what they can do on, you know, without this cottage code and what they can do with?
Yeah. I, I think, well, I think when we, yeah, the answer, yes, we could. That would be, that would be a different legislative ask. But I think going back to that housing needs, it didn't mention do this for middle housing code. It just addressed this as an issue in general for Hood River. The difficulty in, in administering clearly and objectively your, your methodology right now. So we went, when we went from 33 to 28, we put in some language regarding slope sites that made it a little tricky, made it a little tricky, tricky to administer. So I think that was something that would be great to address.
So I think that you're talking about a few different things. Right now we're talking about potentially changing the 28 foot height to 25 or 25 and 28 on corner lots. And this is just for middle housing. You've also mentioned the difficulty of administering the current code we have and how it reads. And, and there are some discrepancies and it's, it's too vague. Then we've also talked about, or Mark just mentioned, the possibility of taking this code and applying it to the way we might interpret the code to our other zones, not middle housing. So I think we've got like three or four things that we're talking about. And so I'd like to try and focus this back on middle housing only. And I'm not saying those other things aren't really important. But we've kind of gotten astray here a little bit on all these other things too, tonight, which is good discussion. That is great. But I think let's try and focus us back down on just this one thing here for the middle housing.
So I like the white column.
The what? The white column. Okay. All right. All right. And I think Gladys was, I think Gladys was on the green column. Is that right? Okay. The dark green column. Megan?
Yeah, I'd like the height to be the same as anything else you could build in that code.
Okay, so keep it the same. 28. Jessica?
I kind of had said the white column before, but I, I could go with the green.
Okay, so either way for you. Eric?
Yeah, I don't really have a constructive comment to provide here. Sorry.
That's okay. Tim?
I would go for, I would go for keeping it the same, but I am also sensitive to Dustin's computational dilemma. So I, I'm interested to see if there is some other more clear, clear-cut way to reduce the amount of conflict associated with making those decisions. So I'm sure, not sure that that's terribly helpful. I guess what I'm saying is, I don't see it, see it as broke other than the computational difficulties that Dustin's experiencing.
And which I think are just across the board, not necessarily just for this. Yeah. Mark?
I still like the white column.
The white column. Okay. Well, you've got our input, Dustin. Lasers back in on it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all. That's, that's exactly what I needed. I will do some more code tweaking, take this to the planning commission who will deliberate more. We'll have some more community conversations and this will come back to you all. Again, you will have the opportunity for a public hearing with the whole code strikes and underlines and all the pieces that come along with it as a legislative body. So please, if you have questions, you want to talk to me, you want to give input, I'm happy, I'm happy to go over it with you.
Thank you, everyone. All right, we're going to adjourn the work session and I'm going to, I know it's after nine, but let's take three minutes, three.
We made this banana bread and it is so good. I should, I should bring snacks next time.
Okay, it looks like we're all back. Thank you, everyone. We'll open the regular council meeting. Do we have any agenda additions or corrections?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Okay. We have one item on our consent agenda. A professional service contract for sanitary sewer infiltration and inflow study. Could I get a motion on that or?
Can I ask, can I ask three quick questions about it? And then I'll make a motion if you want me to.
Sure.
Hey, Mark?
Your questions are for Mark?
Go ahead, Counselor.
First question is, will you please tell us when they're going to do the smoke test? Cause that seems pretty entertaining to me. So I want to, I want to watch when they do that. Two, are you going to warn citizens so they don't freak out when there's a smoke test? And three, the schedule presented on page 35 that has, we do that. Basically, I'm worried, there's a bunch of tests that need to be done in both high flow and low flow. You know, like when it's raining and when it's not raining. And, but the tests go into May when it's not raining. So I don't know if you, if that's being considered that after the middle of April, you're not guaranteed to have very much for water. You know, there's, there'll be a storm or two, but not much. Yeah.
Sure, Counselor, we're happy to talk through all of that with, with the consultants. The goal of the study is to get good data. We wouldn't, so if we're not getting the data that we need, we can extend the timelines or, you know, perhaps Mother Nature will read us with some storms. We've had several big storms in the spring and the storm, the spring is actually when the groundwater is the highest. So we're measuring other things at that time as well.
Sweet.
Yeah, good. And we will be informing people of course, smoke starts pouring out of things.
Nice.
Thanks, Wade. Anything else you want to add?
The, the flow testing is the portion that the counselor is talking about. And that's a little bit up in the air depending on the smoke test results. We could either extend it or forego it entirely and concentrate on just the smoke results and the video cameras. But most likely if we include that, it will be extended through next winter.
Okay, gotcha. I just saw everything ending in May. That's why I said it. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. And one thing, just since you asked the question, Counselor, we, we do have enough projects to get started right away. So the reason that we're doing this is so that we can be strategic going forward. But thanks to the great work of our sewer crews and our public works crews, we really do have enough, enough work to get started on.
No, this is, this is great. I'm excited for the test and plugging the hole. No, this is, this is great. I'm excited for the test and plugging the holes. Yes, absolutely. So.
You want to make a motion, Mark?
Oh, I will move that we approve the consent agenda. Sorry, Mike.
Okay.
You made it yourself, so I came up.
Okay, we're getting it rolling here. Okay, Megan has made a motion and Mark has made a second to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call. Eric?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Megan?
Yes.
Gladys?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Chair votes aye. Okay, consent agenda has passed. Any regular business items?
No, Mayor, there are none.
Okay, organizational update?
Sure, I, I'll mention a couple of things. On February eighth, we are going to have a presentation by Eco Northwest that really kind of dovetails with the conversation that you started tonight, which is given the dynamics in the Hood River housing market. You know, we can't just expect increased supply to meet the needs of everybody and every income level. So Eco Northwest is going to talk about the Hood River housing market and really start talking about what some of the policy levers are that the city council has to get at affordable housing, deed restricted housing, sometimes called subsidized housing, and what some of the community projects and initiatives could be around this very topic. So it starts at five o'clock and we'll get some information out there about this. Mayor, if I could also mention, I did want to, to mention to the council that we have two retirements coming up. So Anthony Frazier was a detective in the, in the police department, just retired from the city and if you have not met Detective Frazier, I'm sure many of you have just, you know, just a consummate professional and were really grateful for all the work that he did on behalf of the community for so many years. And then Dave Ozonian, also known as Ods, is retiring from the sewer division and public works and, you know, we just approved the contract for the sanitary sewer infiltration and inflow study. I think it's appropriate that we also mentioned that he'll be retiring. He has done an incredible job just keeping this very aged infrastructure clean and free routes for, for many, many years. So wanted to mention those two things to you and that's all for my update.
Great, thank you. Yeah, good luck to the two new retirees. They've, they've served our community for long, long periods of time. I worked with Jennifer Ozonian when I was a real estate agent and they're just great family to have here and the Fraziers have been here a long time too. So they've really contributed a lot to the community with their service. So appreciate it. All right, committee appointments. We've got a list, I think, here. Let me get to it. And see if we're still on, on board with what we're doing or people want to, you know, throw their numbers up in the air and do something different. The Shade Tree Committee, I guess we'll just go through them as, as they're stated here. Tim, you've been on that committee and I know we did have a well, it was the Tree Committee. Is it the Shade Tree Committee and the Tree Committee? Are they the same thing?
Yes, Mayor.
They are the same thing. Okay. So we had an update from the Tree Committee and I guess a couple of people are are leaving that committee. And so we need to, to talk about additional appointments for that committee. And I guess for now, who wants to still be on it that's a counselor?
I'm fine with continuing on the Tree Committee, Mayor.
Okay.
To be Tim's sub if such thing is needed.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. And so we might look at, I know that they haven't been having meetings. Rachel? And that's, I assume because of COVID?
Yeah, Mayor, thanks for the question. I saw that. We actually, if committees can meet, can and are meeting virtually. So we'll circle back with them and make sure they've gotten that message. I do know Haley did meet with them to get input onto the, the tree project that you talked about last, last meeting. So we'll circle back with them.
Okay, okay, great. That'd be great. And then as they're meeting, if they need to have new appointees, then maybe they can just bring that information back to council through, through Rachel. Okay, great. Chamber of Commerce, Megan, Jessica, and Eric as a sub. So I think it's just mainly the chamber now, visitor advisory committee, is it kind of morphed together still or is it just the chamber?
I think they're officially visit Hood River now, but it's, it's a combined group.
Okay.
And, you know, yeah, they're still working through some of the organizational stuff, but it sounds like we're now ex officio and not voting members.
I think that's what we were before.
We were voting before.
Yeah, I, I do. The chamber, the, the city will be able to appoint one representative and but we haven't really had an internal conversation about what that looks like and, and who it should be. It's pretty flexible in their bylaws. So at this point, I would suggest that there's at least one counselor who's willing to, to participate in that along, along with me.
Okay, so if, if either Megan or Jessica want, want to do that, I'm not sure how many other committees that people are on and if they want less, less burden or more burden with more committees. So do either one of you?
I mean, at a minimum, I'm happy to continue it while they're, because they've just been going through, you know, I know we do this every year, but they've been going through a lot of change and I'd like to just like get to some stability before someone knew, Johnson, maybe. Or I'm happy to do it forever. We'll see what they end up, but.
Well, and we've been tag teaming it. I don't know if that approach is not ideal, but I'm willing to keep tag teaming it. We alternate who participates and keep each other up to date.
Well, I guess if the, if the visitors council is okay with that, you know, we could, we could just do the tag team thing still if you both want to be, both want to be on it. And one of you goes one time and then the other one goes the next time. Or if you have a conflict.
I think it'll be fine.
Okay.
All right.
We'll just have to figure it out. And so I appreciate both Counselor Metta and Counselor Saunders have been willing to, to jump in there and, and so having two people spread the work is can be beneficial.
Okay. We have our planning commission and of course, nobody from the city council is on that as the structure works. And so I do see that we have six people. Is that? Don't we normally have seven? Are we shy one person right now? Dustin?
I believe Erica Price got left off the list.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, never mind that.
About Erica.
Okay, our budget committee consists of council and then at-large positions. And it looks like several of these positions were up last year. Three, so will we be advertising for that?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, all right, great. So we'll try and get some people sooner than later because we'll be starting that process in a couple of months, two and a half months or something. So. All right. Landmarks Review Board. We have one vacancy for that. Is that being advertised or is just, you know, we're trying to get someone whenever we can get them kind of thing or?
We have, yeah. That one, yeah, that has been typically harder to fill. So we will, we'll take a look at how we're advertising that one.
Okay, all right, great. Energy Council. So I'm on the Energy Council and Tim. We have down here, Tim is on the Energy Council and Megan is a sub. So I guess, I didn't really know that. I thought, I thought Tim was our sub, but because I know, Tim, you've been attending those, but I believe you listen to the meetings a lot of times, Megan, don't you?
No, I don't. I'm not on the email list or anything.
You haven't been. Okay, all right, right. Are you still good on that, Tim?
I'll sub for you anytime.
You'll sub for me anytime. Okay. But you have been, I believe, at, at least at some of those Zoom meetings in this last year.
No, I haven't. And I think it's beneficial to be able to be an efficient sub when, when the call is needed.
Okay.
It's a complicated set of things that's happening there.
Yeah, there's a lot of different subcommittees that are doing lots of different types of things. And that one is meeting, it's got kind of a funny, I think we're meeting at two or three o'clock in the afternoon, once a month on a Thursday or sometimes a Friday, we have to do it. I can get, Mark?
Can I get on the, just the minutes emails and meeting notices? I, I might want to listen once in a blue moon.
Sure.
Anything, but just to be in distribution would be nice.
Sure, yeah, I'll, I'll put that down and I'll get you on the list. ODOT. Eric Hayne, our hero on ODOT.
Say so, Mayor.
Are you still good on that?
Yes, I'd be happy to do it. It candidly, that organ, that group might exist more for the benefit of ODOT than us, but I, I think the key value of it is being able to interface with the, the higher-ups at ODOT. So that's really the important part of it. So I'm happy to keep doing it. If someone else wishes to do it, they're welcome to it. But sure.
And Tim, you've been our sub on that. I think you're on that.
Yeah, I think I subbed for one time. You sent me off into the Hinterlands somewhere. Wasn't actually in Portland. It was someplace like way south of Portland. So I subbed for Eric in the, in Hinterlands.
Okay, great. Mid Columbia Economic Development District. So Mark, you've been doing that?
Yeah, but, but I'm not representing the cities of Hood River at this point.
Because Cascade Locks is being represented right now. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
I don't know. I, I, I do speak for the technology cluster within the district. So I don't know if I guess you can leave me here, but it's with an asterix anyway. So.
Well, we have a direct link to Mid Columbia Economic Development District with us.
And we can go ahead and note that. We'll note the asterisk and also note that Counselor Metta serves as the executive director.
Okay, all right. Urban Renewal Advisory, we've just appointed, let me see, is this up to date? We have seven people on that and these are all up-to-date appointments. Looks like it.
Yeah.
On, on your act. Yeah, there are no vacancies on your act right now.
No vacancies?
Yeah, and I believe Jen updated all the terms.
Okay, yeah, it doesn't look like anyone has, you know, there's no lapsed terms or anything on here. Equity Advisory Committee. So that's the, formerly we were calling it the Latino Advisory Committee and we've kind of, I've talked to Rachel about it a little bit and we thought, well, we, we wanted to have more than Latino community. And I, you know, it's the mayor's Latino Advisory Committee originally, but I don't think it needs to be the mayor's. I just think it needs to be equity. We, we don't have to call it the mayor's committee. I was on it, Gladys was on it, Laura was helping with translation and Gabby. Was Gabby at just at one of those meetings? I don't remember that. Gladys, go ahead.
I think she might have been at one with Laura, like when I was first appointed. While I see that it says Equity Advisory Committee, I think it's one, it's important that we have direct access, but I really strongly believe that it should still be the mayor's Equity Advisory Committee because it is that direct communication to you, Kate, to us as a council. So I don't know if the Equity Advisory Committee, do they still have a meeting directly with counselors in UK or is it?
No, because, because we only had one or two meetings after I started doing it, after it lapsed when Paul was doing it and then nothing happened. Because he was the one that was doing it before. And so, you know, no, I mean, it was, I had kind of lined up a different counselor to come to each meeting. So if they wanted to, to say, and so we didn't inundate everyone with, you know, four counselors. We didn't want to have a quorum, all those things. So but then COVID, so. Yeah. Yeah, so I think we can, we can get back to doing that and one of the things going to this Columbia Gorge Health Equity Council meeting tomorrow to help interface with what they're doing, I think also interfaces with this, but you had also mentioned to me in a phone call that you thought that it shouldn't necessarily, we can do our channels with the people that work in that field. They're kind of the experts in, in the different things that might help people out that we aren't aware of and like bringing, bringing Al Barton tonight and, you know, getting more information about what people need and what they're not getting or you know, lacking in certain areas. That's really important for us to know as counselors is how does our community work? What's working, what isn't working, what do we need? Not that we can provide it all as a city, but we could help collaborate better. So I think that's what all those conversations are about. So I think this Gorge Equity Group will, will be a way to connect with people that are helping people that need the help. But this, if we have this meeting, this would just be one-on-one with people that need the help. This would be citizenry. If, if we do this, this is what we did, we tried to do before and we got information out through Nextdoor and we could go through the indigenous community and, and so, you know, we've kind of got two things going here at the same time.
That's what I'm looking for more of, whether that's, I'm looking for a group that's specifically having direct contact with you as the mayor and us as a council. The Mayor's Latino Advisory Council was something that Mayor Blackburn or Paul Blackburn started. And I want to just highlight the importance of having that committee available because it allowed representatives from those groups, natives along the Big River to then come to Paul and say, hey, Paul, this is what's going on. It was at that time that Paul said, hey, what about having one of you be on council? It was during that exact time that Megan came to Latinos in Acción and I heard from her how I as a community member needed to be involved. So I think all of that ended up getting us a Latina counselor. And that's what we need more of. We need to bridge these groups. How do we as a city, as a council have these established relationships with our community partners so that we are growing our own talent, our own counselors from these groups? How do we empower them to do that? And I think that we have to have a group that is directly connected to you as the mayor and to us as a council. And we still need that.
And I, and I think it's important that as you had mentioned to me in a conversation, sorry, we're getting into this a little bit, but I just want to talk about what we, this, this committee would be for just a little bit longer. Is that you had said that, you know, if someone hadn't come and talked and said, you know, you can come to a meeting and we'll hear your voice and that's what Megan had said to you and this is how it works and this is what time you need to be there and this is how the system functions. And if nobody says anything, then everybody believes something different. So you have to have your voice heard. So and making that relationship first in order to get people to do So, and making that relationship first in order to get people to do that is really important. So I want to get that going again, and so Gladys and I will be on that. And then we'll let you guys know again when we're starting those back up, and if you'd like to join, and we'll be doing them by Zoom. So.
Yeah, I, I want to join in from time to time, because that's all good stuff, but you guys being the lead is perfecto.
Yeah, and I'm excited for them to get started again.
Okay, great, great. The Bridge Replacement Working Group, so I'm the, the appointee, and I'm happy to do that. And Jessica, you're our alternate?
Yeah, I'm just alternate.
Are you okay on that, Jessica, still alternate?
Yeah.
Okay, and we're meeting one time a month, and we're usually work, meeting on Thursdays, sometimes on Fridays, and it's during the day. And that's going well, so. Aging in the Gorge. That's the only other.
Mayor, if I could, so last year, the City Council went through and listed a bunch of other groups that are not formal City Council groups, but groups that you wanted to have some sort of presence in. And so we left that list on, they are not formal council committees, but we left the list on. It's Aging in the George, in the Gorge, and then extends to the other page. So just a little context about where that came from, in case you don't remember pre-COVID.
Right, I remember that, yeah. So these aren't official, official appointments to different things, but I know that we have had some counselors that have said, you know, I want to keep track of that, I will, I will be the liaison. And I, and if something important came up and we had testimony from people from Aging in the Gorge, they may have sent something to Tim ahead of time, because I think, Tim, you had said that, you know, you would keep in contact with that group, and they would send you their information, and, and if there was a mutual thing that we could collaborate on, that, that you would bring the information.
Yep, and I've been doing that, and I've been keeping in touch with both Claire and Bonnie New, Claire Horwitz. And so I'm happy to do that, too.
Okay, great, great. I think the Chamber, we've already got, we have a representative there. The Heights Group, I think that was kind of something that came about partially because of the Urban Renewal Advisory Committee. And this was just a contact person, Danny Creo was the person who was kind of leading that group on the Heights. And we didn't, we didn't have a specific, you know, business owner up there that was going to those meetings. But I think the Urban Renewal, Urban Renewal Advisory Committee has several business owners that are on that committee that also belong to this Heights Business Group, as, that's what I understood from the, the meeting I went to. Thrive, Heather Staton, we definitely, Heather gives us her input. We have it quite often, and we're, we're glad to have it. And she keeps us well-informed on what they're doing and what they'd like to see from the city. So I think she's been a great liaison for us. Livable, we kind of had the livables and the lovable's and, and, and kind of went back and forth when we were going through the STRs. But I don't know how active Livable is now, but I guess we can check that out. Indivisible is Bonnie New, and I hear from her occasionally, but not, not super often. She's also on the Aging in the Gorge Alliance. And Community Outreach, do you know what that is about, Rachel, Community Outreach with Amanda?
No, Mayor, I'd have to refresh my memory on that or contact Amanda, I apologize.
Amanda was coordinating a, a sort of an alternate meeting in, in the Heights, is sort of what it was. And she, she, they did a couple of events, and I don't know if it's still active or not, so.
Oh, okay, all right.
Or was that the catch thing?
What's that?
Was that that catch thing of like, come and just be around for a half hour, and the community can talk to you?
Yeah.
Pre-COVID.
Oh, yeah, yeah, pre-COVID.
We all got to join.
Yeah, yeah. And of course, Rachel's in Rotary, so. And Counselor Haney's in Rotary, yeah, yeah. So I think that's, that's our list for appoint, appointments. So as we discussed, we, I am going to appoint everyone as they, they have agreed in, during the discussion this evening. Thank you, everyone. I've got a couple things, we go on council call, I think we're on council call, correct? So we're going to do Rachel's review. She, we're a little bit behind on that because of COVID last year. We had a lot of things on our plate, and so did she. And she still does, but we need to get that done. So what she's going to do is a self-evaluation, and then we're going to get to look at that. And then we're going to have some evaluation, evaluation sheets. And Jennifer will get those to all of you. And I believe those will, we will have you write those out and put them in an envelope and bring them back down to, or, or, yeah, I think the best way, bring them back down to City Hall, drop them off on an envelope and give them to me, and I will compile them. That's what we've done previously. And then when we get all of those, we're going to try and get this done in the next month, within the next month, all of this. And then we'll have an executive session on the 22nd of February to go over that. So just, it's time to do that. Good news, I went to the County Commission meeting, and I think you were on that call, weren't you, Megan? I wasn't sure, were you on that call too, Gladys? Okay, I, I didn't get to speak till 8:30 or something. They said, oh yeah, you'll be speaking at 6:30, and I'm like, two hours later. Anyway, they asked me what, what we wanted to do, what, you know, what, what, what the ask was for the county with the city-county structure, and they have agreed that they want to go forward with what we're doing. So they suggested that they have, they appoint two people to a subcommittee, and we appoint two people to a subcommittee. And we would ha, also have someone that would help us through this process, we wouldn't be doing it alone. And, you know, start, start working through what we need. We would also have the sheriff, he's an elected official. We would have definitely input from our city manager, their city manager, Chief Holstein. So, you know, there'll be a collaborative effort to try and figure out what we're going to need in the future. So they've got a lot of data that they've gathered for what they need already physically, but they've also gone through a bunch of things about, you know, what other, other things they might need too, not just physical, you know, how, a little bit about policing in the future, they've already gone through a small amount of that during their process, apparently. So they were all on board, and they think it's going to be a, a great process to start looking at. So I, I was thrilled that, that they all were on board to do that, so it's great. Let's see here, oh, one, one other thing. We've had a request from the library, the library, the Friends of the Library are going to, they're trying to get a grant to put up a mobile library that can, you know, go to Odell, go to Parkdale, especially with COVID, they'll actually have a Wi-Fi hotspot for, for people, for adults or kids. So it's, it's quite an endeavor to take on, but they think pretty worthy that, you know, help with equity. And so they, they just like us to write a letter of support, no money, they aren't asking for any money. They just would say, would you, you know, endorse this idea, basically? And so I, I said, oh gosh, I can't, I think it's a great thing, I can't see, we aren't going to endorse it, but I just wanted to bring it to you guys and see if you guys would give me a, a thumbs up to, to just say that that's a good thing, that, you know, we don't have to put any money into it. But are you guys in general, are you good on, on supporting that? I see only one head that's not nodding, okay, thank you, Eric. Okay, great, all right. The rest of council, council call, let's see, Tim?
Mayor, I apologize for the interruption. Were you, did you want counselors to be appointed to work with the county at this meeting?
Oh yeah, we should do that, yes, we should, yes. We, we need to appoint two people for that committee. Oh, we've got all, we've got two, we've got a lot of people. So I've, Mark raised his hand, Gladys raised her hand, Megan raised her hand.
So and they, I mean, my recollection of the county was a non-quorum amount of counselors, so we could have three.
Yeah, we can have three. They're going to have two, and we probably should have two. So we, we can't have three.
Were you planning on being on it, Kate, or I couldn't tell from your description?
I don't necessarily have to be on it, no, I don't necessarily have to be on it. I'll tell you who's going to be on it for the county, Arthur's going to be on it, and Karen Joplin is going to be on it. Karen was the one who, well, she works with, does the mental health, she's in contact with, with the mental health department and the health department. So she's kind of the liaison for those groups for the county. And she also was in charge when they were doing the study for the new courthouse. So she has a lot of background in all of, all of that, and I think that's why they thought, you know, she would be the appropriate one, because she has all that background in, in all of those different areas, so.
So I, I'm obviously being involved in our conversations and listening to the county. I think this is going to be very similar to Parks, where there's going to have to be a lot of feedback loops to the full council and, and getting policy decisions, because it's, I think internally, us, and I'm honestly very clear that the county, there isn't actually agreement or understanding of, of like, what the majority of, I think, council or the commission actually wants to do besides, we're going to get together.
Yeah, I think, I think you're reading it correctly, Megan. I think, well, Megan, I don't listen to the County Commission meetings too often, occasionally when there's a certain subject I'm, but I believe you listen to them quite a bit.
Pretty much every month, yeah.
Pretty much every month, so you're really familiar with their process and what, what, how they work and their, how they roll.
Yeah.
So is it just facility, or is it bigger than that?
Is it what?
I think, I think that's where some of the debate might be.
Okay. Is it program-related or just facility-related? That's what I was.
Well, we're, 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 we're our facility, but I said, you know, when I talked to them, I said, how do we know what kind of facility to build if we don't know about programs, or what programs could be, or how they might change? Or, or, you know, could we build something that was multi-purpose? So that we could go this direction or that direction? And so then they were like, oh yeah, yeah, we, yeah, we probably should be talking about that, that's a good idea. And I, and I said, you know, we can't, we can't get a bond passed in this climate. It, it's not going to work, we, we've got to do our homework, we have to, you know, talk about these things and, and, you know, get them figured out prior to asking people for money. So they, they got that part of it, for sure. So I think that's another reason they agreed that we need to have these discussions. Bring the whole community ideas, or, you know, Center for Living, Health Department, Children's Advocacy, you know, a, all those discussions need to be had. But, but I told them, and I was hoping that, you know, with help, with having some contractor help us get through this, that we, I hoped we could get through this within this, this year, by the end of this year. You know, we're not, we can talk ourselves to death, but we, you know, we have to get some decisions made. So hopefully we could get these meetings going, and we could get some decisions done to figure out what and if we're going to do anything by the end of this year. That's what I asked. So. Boy.
I would still absolutely love to be a part of this conversation, and I, I think it's the equitable solution to have, at least myself. I will fully advocate for myself to be on there, and I'll leave it at that.
I'm happy.
I guess I'm just going to say again, like Parks Committee, they had two, we had three, and I didn't see that being a problem in any form.
We could ask.
I mean, they, they said a non-quorum amount, I don't think they care.
As long as we don't have a quorum.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought the three people that were on the Parks Master Plan one, we worked well together, so.
All right, well, well, let's, let's ask if they think that's okay.
I'd love to work with both of you.
Yeah. I'm, I'm going to say, let's just, we're going to appoint Megan, Gladys, and Mark to this committee. And I'll talk to Chair Oates about it, and, and Rachel can maybe mention it to Jeff Hexel. And we don't, they don't have a quorum, if they had more than two, they'd have a quorum. With three, we still don't have a quorum. I mean, I don't think there's going to be, I mean, we're going to go forward with consensus, it's not, we're not going to vote something down. So, you know, we're going to go forward together, anyway, so I don't think that's a problem. All right, let's, let's do that. Anything else, Rachel?
No, Mayor, nothing.
Okay, all right, Tim? Council call?
Also, my unmute button, unmute button doesn't work. No, I don't have anything, Kate.
Okay, all right, Megan?
Okay, hi, sorry. Um, yeah, so there was a Visit the River meeting last week. They're still working through, you know, the organizational combining of Chamber and Visit the River into one entity, updating some bylaws, working on recruiting the new director. Kind of where that's at. Couple of things from the county meeting, Big River Community Land Trust did a presentation. Didn't get any details, but it sounds like they did build three houses last year, so they have put some stuff on the ground. COVID update from the County Health Department, unsurprisingly, not super positive. But vaccines are getting out there, sounds like uptake is going to be an issue, and there definitely needs to be the community to try and get folks on board, if we're going to reach our immunity. The main things relevant to the city, so.
Thanks, Eric?
Nothing for me tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Gladys?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to take the time, first of all, to thank our Rachel and the rest of city staff for everything that they do for our city. I was so moved by Ms. Gorman's speech last Wednesday that I want to highlight some of it, not all of it. At least the section that just spoke to me so much to, I mean, it just so deeply moved me, so I want to be able to share that with you guys. "We will not march back to what was, but move to what shall be. A country that is bruised but whole, benevolent but bold, fierce and free. We will not be turned around or interrupted by intimidation because we know our inaction and inertia will be the inheritance of the next generation. Our blunders become their burdens, but one thing is certain. If we merge mercy with might and might with right, then love becomes our legacy and change our children's birthright. So to let us leave behind a country better than, than the one we were left with. Every breath from my bronze pounded chest, we will raise this wounded world into a wondrous one. We will rise from the golden hills of the west, we will rise from the windswept northeast where our forefathers first realized revolution. We will rise from the lake rim cities of the midwestern states, we will rise from the sunbaked south. We will rebuild, reconcile, and recover. And every nook of our nation and every corner called our country, our people diverse and beautiful will emerge, battered and beautiful. When one day, sorry, when day becomes, we step out of the shade aflame and unafraid. The new dawn blooms as we free it, for there's always light, if only we're brave enough to see it. If only we're brave enough to be it." I said this last time, last week, and I will be forever grateful and privileged to be in. I said this last time last week, and I will be forever grateful and privileged to be in this position, and to simply have a seat at this table with all of you, thank you for being my peer, thank you for helping me grow and learn this last year, and thank you for simply collaborating with me as we design equity and build a Hood River that is inclusive, welcoming to all of us.
Thank you, Gladys. That was a very moving speech that was made, and thank you for repeating part of it. Mark?
I have to follow the poem, really?
Yeah.
Um, the only thing I was going to bring up is, um, I, I'm going to join a meeting that's organized by Dan Spats at the Community College, that is looking at the intersection between education, community college, agriculture led by the the OSU Center and technology, to see if there isn't some bridges that we can build between those three things, I don't see a lot of direct city stuff right now, but, but it, I don't know, if it ends up getting legs, it could be entertaining, so, so I'll, I'll keep you updated, so.
Great. Jessica?
I had, was contacted by Martine Campos Davis, who is the economic, or, excuse me, the executive director of OHCC, is the Oregon Human Development Corporation, which particularly works with farmworkers across the state and even in Nevada, and their board requires that some of their board seats are directly for elected officials, but given the statewide nature of their entity, it's difficult to get elected officials, so he was, they, he's recruited somebody from Hood River that he would like to be on the board, and asked if I would, I can nominate that person in my, in my seat, so I did that. And then Granados is the marketing coordinator at the Nextdoor, so she will be reporting to me on what's going on, and I can share some of that with you, especially as it relates to Hood River.
Great, another connection, that's, that's great, fantastic, like it, alright, I think that's it tonight. So much for a short meeting, we shouldn't, we shouldn't have said it ahead of time, sorry, guys.
Definitely your fault, Kate.
I know, it's my fault, I know, shouldn't, should never said it, alright, we did a lot of good work, though, we had, had a lot of good discussion, thank you, everyone, appreciate it. February 8th, February, I don't forget, our next meeting.
The 6th Thursday.
Oh, the 6th, the 6th, that's right, it's a Saturday, a week from Saturday, alright, talk to you later, bye.